The first item is 3.1. We have, on tonight's discussion, for the agenda is for the council to receive an overview of the budget process tax policy as relates to FY '16 budget development and a one-time general fund request for FY '16. And Laurie Wingenroth, Budget and Research Manager, to present. Laurie?
Thank you. I'm here again to continue a series of work sessions we're having to walk you through and develop the FY '16 budget. So today, we are going to be, oops, which budget? There we go, wrong tool. Obviously, a mouse won't work.
That's right. I guess we're timed.
So today, we're going to cover a couple of topics. First, I'll just, again, walk you through the calendar to give you an idea of where we are in the process. And then I'm going to talk about one-time general fund funding requests for the FY '16 budget. We'll kind of break at that point in time. We'll mainly be going over newly requested CIP projects, as well as just some high-level information on the initial supplemental requests that we received from the departments. And we'll take a break at that point in time to give you a chance to give us some feedback on that information, to see if we're headed in the right direction, or if there's anything missing as we're moving forward in budget development. And then there's a couple areas of tax policy where we wanted to also have some discussion. So once we finish going through the one-time items, we'll pick up again and talk about the tax policy items. So as for the calendar, March 16th is where we are now, doing this update. The next thing you're going to see is the departments will be coming forward in a couple of weeks to do their base budget presentations. Following that, we'll do a revenue update, expenditure updates with the recommended supplementals and the CIP, and then finally, a recommended draft budget. So the point here is, again, to let you know that we are still early in the process. We're seeking feedback. We're not here to make a recommendation at this point in time. And you'll have another chance to look at this before we actually recommend a budget, and before you actually act on one. After we present the draft budget, there'll be a public budget forum, and then we'll go through the process of the formal adoption of the budget through May, June, and July with the property tax levy. So initially, we're just talking to you today about the general fund portion of the budget. Did want to point out that the utilities are participating in the budget process. However, as you know, they are going through a rate and capital needs study and a citizen review process, and so it's just too early in the process to bring that information forward. So thus, we're just going to focus on the general fund. What I wanted to start with was, last time we talked with you, you had had some questions about the information about the resources that we felt we were currently projecting may be available. So I thought what I'd do first is kind of go through some of the uses of one-time general funds. We've already adopted a CIP. You adopted the 10-year CIP, so this 3.4 million is what was included in that CIP for FY '16. Again, that doesn't have to stay that way. You can certainly make changes to that, but we wanted to set aside and show that those resources were already planned. The next group of resources uses are developer deposits. That's cases where developers have already given us resources to be used for future projects. So we're setting those aside. They can only be used for the projects for which they were given to us for, so we just need to make sure those resources are available when they're needed. The next item is the special census, which was approved by you this year, and what we needed to do was return the resources that were borrowed from the asset management funds this year. The plan was to return those in this coming year's budget, so that's the 1.3 million that's being set aside there. We're currently estimating next year's contingency will need to be set at 16.5 million to stay within the policy of the first three months of actual expenditures or anticipated expenditures. And then the next several items, it's an additional amount for asset management. Again, this is just an estimate. We're still going through the asset management process and evaluation. We're recommending 1.9 million be set aside on an annual basis to address fleet replacements for the general fund. You saw some information on the fleet program earlier this year. We're also recommending that about, just under $1 million a year, be set aside for information technology hardware. For both fleet and information technology hardware, we have had reserves already in existence, so we're making recommendations specific to those at this point in time. And then the last item is continuing the city manager's contingency. So that represents $29.4 million in uses of one-time funds. And again, these are subject to your ultimate approval in the budget process. They're not assured numbers. You will be acting on these. This is just based on what we've already heard or past practice.
Joe?
What falls within that half a million dollars of manager's contingency? What could that be used for? And under what purview would that come back to council if you're tapping that?
The city manager's contingency is available to address unexpected items that may come up during the year. There's a specific process and a form that must be used to make those requests. It goes through review by the budget office, and ultimately, the city manager approves those. An example of how that might be used, in this year, if you recall, we had some storms in September. That city manager's contingency was tapped to be used to help pay for some of the initial response, to deal with the damage caused by the storm. Those uses of the city manager's contingency come to you in the form of budget transfers for approval through the quarterly process.
What's the amount that has to come before us for approval? Does nothing have to come before us that's in that contingency fund, other than budget transfers?
The, we would come, our practice is to bring all of those to you. That's not the required, you know, that's not the required level, but in essence, I believe they would all have to come to you because it's a movement from one department to another department, and we bring all interdepartment transfers to you.
No, I just think it would be helpful, contingency is something unexpected, to know when that is actually being used, because it's a budgeted item, but not a specific like these other items are budgeted, whether it's replacement vehicles, et cetera. So that would be helpful. On the budget transfers, you see it after the fact with the transfer, so we would know that you need money for X to do that. So I can appreciate the half a million dollars, because I appreciate being forward-thinking on having a reserve fund in case something comes up, but I also think it's important to kind of know what's going on out of that account as well, instead of just bury it, because we get those things quarterly, those budget transfers quarterly. It may be something that was three months earlier that it's kind of lost its flavor after that point, so I think would be helpful.
Bill?
We didn't quite get the answer to the question, though, is what is, what has to come before council? What dollar figure has to come before us?
I think Brian needs to answer that. Brian, could you answer that?
Right. The manager has authority up to $75,000 for unbudgeted items. So that's a short answer, is it's after 70, anything over $75,000 would require council approval.
And is that $75,000 limit, is that in council policy? Is that in city policy? What mechanism uses the 70, gets us to 75?
Council has set that.
We voted for that when I was, before you were on, any of you were on the team. That was, at one time, I think they had 50, and we took it up to 75, because the 50 just wasn't realistic on what was going on. And I really don't know the date, but it was before any of you were on the council.
I believe it's in the procurement code, which was, I believe it's in the procurement code, it was approved by council.
Okay. Sherry?
And I'm not sure if this is the right spot to ask where this should be inserted or when, but as things come up, like one thing that came up was, I was talking to Brian about, the city manager, about a light up near San Gabriel, up in Estrella, with some of the new construction. Is this something that would go in this area, or how does that work?
I guess they're looking for the parameters of what?
I don't know when to ask for it.
The 75, maybe it'd be helpful.
Right. That'll come up as we go through some of the CIP items that we're talking about. This is exactly where we want the input tonight, not on this particular spreadsheet, but yes, tonight is where we're working.
I mean, the right president, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Joanne?
One more time, could you explain what the IT hardware amount was for again?
Yes. The IT hardware, the information technology department has established a 10-year plan for replacing our desktop computers, printers, copiers, you know, all the kinds of technology equipment that the city uses to move, to do our business. And so they have a plan that, you know, please, I don't know the specifics of it, but for example, it may say that a desktop lasts for five years. So we have a plan that says, five years from now, this many will need to be replaced, and, you know, six years, that many. And so we've gone through and reviewed that plan and come up with a kind of an average annual amount that we can set aside each year so that we have the funds available to make those replacements when they become necessary.
Certainly.
So there may be years where the, we may only need to spend $400,000, but the next year, we may need to spend 1.2 million, and so by setting kind of a flat $900,000 a year, we're creating the capacity and the funding in order to replace things when they come due.
It's very much like Joe's favorite, the fleet replacement. But you can see the cost, the difference between the two is certainly much more for the fleet, but, good question.
Thank you.
Yes, Bill?
But if we're doing that from IT replacement and the fleet replacement, that would show up in a separate fund, would it not?
The, we have created separate sub-funds of the general fund, so that we can separately track these reserves and keep on top of them, so that if we do put, for example, 1.9 million into fleet in FY '16, if we only need to spend 1.6, that remaining .3 will stay for the future year. But they are, the resource initially comes from the general fund and is put into these kind of sub-funds of the general fund, so it is ultimately funded by the general fund.
Okay, but this is, so this is not, and let's use fleet as the example, it's 1.9 million of new money added into what is already the common term account balance that exists today.
That's correct. This is the new resources that would be added.
Right. So this, but in the city manager's contingency, for example, that's $500,000 every year, and it doesn't roll over it?
Correct.
So it's capped at 500 a year, so it's not 500 this year, 500 last year, 500 a year after.
Correct. The city manager's contingency is not treated as a reserve. If it's not spent, it falls to the ending fund balance and becomes available in the subsequent year.
Okay, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think that that kind of information is really important for us to delineate between what's an ongoing fund, if you will, versus the one-time. You know what, I don't want to use the wrong terminology, so I want, but I think you get the point.
Okay. We will use caution in the future. We'll be sure to use the word reserve to indicate when it is being set aside and will be rollover for future years.
And it's cumulative, as opposed to just a, I think that'll be helpful. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Joe?
This kind of reserve falls into what we had talked about earlier, with that $5 million number, which was originally set aside to try to repopulate this reserve from various things, IT, buildings, equipment, et cetera. Is that accurate?
Correct. The $5 million was set aside in order to seed other reserves that we might need. So for example, I think you've seen a presentation by Streets on the needs for street maintenance in the future, and a number of other departments are going through a 10-year planning process to forecast their needs for replacing existing assets. And that $5 million, and this $2 million that we're showing up here, are intended to help begin those other reserves, or create a funding source for some of those other needs that maybe aren't as well-known yet, or aren't as established yet.
Will we, at some point, have a presentation showing a depreciation schedule of all the equipment, see what we have, what's expected to be expended, say, over the next five years, and what shortfalls, how close we are to having the reserves fully funded, I guess is my question? Because I know you're working on a depreciation schedule to show, timing-wise, you know, when you needed the cash to replace certain equipment. I know it was in the works, I don't know where it is right now, but are we going to be able to see some type of presentation? Are we 80% there, 90% there, 70%? To kind of get my drift of where I'm coming from.
I believe that we have completed initial reviews of the parks requirements, the technology and the fleet requirements. We have worked with police and fire to look at their equipment needs. We are, I understand that we'll probably be coming forward in April with information on those analyses that we've completed, though there is a process going on right now to look at facilities. So I would say we're probably 80% complete with those reviews.
Okay. I think it would just be helpful to see where we are, and I appreciate breaking it down by each department and each need, so we can see how much money we need to set aside, and then what the policy may be set going forward, and what percentage do we want to be funded of those type of needs. But that would be helpful. Right now, we have money, but we don't know, in the big picture, how that relates to the entire picture, because you still have got some studies going through. So, again, appreciate you doing that, and appreciate update, you know, as soon as we have that information, so we know what's needed kind of moving forward on that with various replacement funds. Just one other quick question. For example, I see the manager's contingency. Hypothetically, if something comes up that's not in the CIP that you need, basis is an example, where you need money to put infrastructure, whatever the case may be, is there a line item in the budget for that, or it's a matter of finding some other project where you're going to have to move money from?
The city manager's contingency is the only place where we specifically set aside funds for unexpected needs. So you would have to find resources from other places, similar to how we handled the census. When the need to fund the special census came up, ideas were developed for other ways to fund that item.
Okay.
Yes.
Joanne?
Okay.
Is any of this further into the presentation?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to wrap my mind around everything that we've been talking about with asset management. You know, we had the set aside for 5 million, correct, last year for asset management? And now we're breaking it down a little more to saying, we need more for fleet, 1.9, okay? We're saying we need more for IT, 1.9. Then we're saying, on top of that, other asset management of 2 million, and all of this is on top of the 5 million, correct? Or am I trying to lump everything under one thing?
Let me try to walk through it a little bit more clearly.
And what is, and let's, I apologize if I didn't hear it, what is other asset management?
I'll walk through it again more clearly. The fleet and the IT set-asides or reserves have been in existence for a while, and before the $5 million was created. This year's budget included $2 million to be set aside for fleet, and I believe it included .3 million to be set aside for IT. So they weren't envisioned as part of the $5 million. The $5 million was intended to help us begin the process of identifying the other areas where we should be doing this type of planning. And so for, the $5 million is considered to be kind of the initial funding to get us started on that. We simply identified the potential that there might be an additional $2 million to get us going this year. Some of that may not be the type of thing where we create a reserve like we do for these larger items. It may just be to recognize that, you know, in some years, there might be a couple hundred thousand dollars of miscellaneous pieces of equipment around the city that need to be replaced. So I don't think anybody's suggesting that the 5 million or the 2 million would be ongoing year after year. That's what we'll do when we come talk to you about those items, and we decide or recommend whether something should be a reserve, if we should just use this money to take care of this one need. So I think we're still formulating that, but I don't think that, at this point in time, we're saying, oh, we need another $7 million on an ongoing annual basis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I think what would help, though, too, is, it's not building, that's, you've used some of that money this year in the budget for replacement equipment, et cetera. That's why I think the cash flow comes in handy on your depreciation schedule, to show, how do we smooth that out over the period of five or 10 years, to make sure we have enough money going in, so when a fire truck needs to be replaced, or something large needs to be replaced, the money's there, and we're not fighting for ongoing money, you know, in the replacement equipment. So that's kind of the whole key, you know, with these reserves. But I'm looking forward to when you finish it, because to me, what's going to be helpful to me is see that cash flow on all those pieces of equipment, and what kind of money is needed each year to maintain, because you've got money in, you've got money going out, you know, the replacement equipment, and what's going to be needed to meet those needs. Right now, we just have holding spots for some of this, and I know that. But I appreciate when you finish that, so we can see how all this is going to work out.
Sherry?
Yeah, I think it's a little fuzzy right now for me, right now, to say, we've got $7 million. I know right now, you can't articulate it, but as we go through it, I'd like to get at least some sort of idea of specifics, like, we use this much of that, I guess it's now, would be seven, five plus two, would it be used for this type of equipment? A little bit more specifics, I know, as we get that, because I know there's things that come up, and it's not on the tip of your tongue right now, but I think that would be helpful if we could get a list, so then if someone asks us, well, where's that $7 million go? We could say, well, this equipment was bad and had to be replaced after this many years.
Larry, would you address some of this?
Yeah, I'd like to take just a minute to probably, because what you're asking for is the same thing we have, and we've been working a lot on this, and Laurie is kind of struck, let's kind of stay away from there, but I want to give you a sense of some of the things that we're looking at, just to kind of help you, because these numbers seem big, and it seems arbitrary, and it's far from that. You'll remember, a few months ago, you had Streets in here with a presentation, and they were suggesting that to maintain our streets at the level that we're at, and at the level of service we need to be, we need approximately $3 million per year to do that. Our current level of effort, financial level of effort on that is 1.2 million a year. So you can see right there, there's about a $2 million delta just on that. Another one that just jumps out to me as a really big one is in the area of right-of-way maintenance, and this came to attention from you several years ago. You talked about how we had the developers put landscaping in, and we aren't maintaining. Granite replacement, just granite replacement, is over $4 million by itself for things that have been there that need to be replaced. Now, that one's one-time, and that's kind of what Laurie's referring to. It's not like the streets, they were all at once, I mean, every year, I mean. The granite, that was a one-time catch-up, and then there's an annual cost that would be obviously a lot less. You get into the parks, and you've got a lot of it, not just the equipment, but the parks itself, the playground equipment, and the other infrastructure within the parks, and what their needs are, sprinkler systems and so forth. So it's very comprehensive. This number sounds big, but when you see it put together with the other plans, what you're going to see is, is that there's a lot that gets covered within that, and we just are going to, and we're going to be rolling this out in April with you. Bob Beckley will take the lead on it. We'll be rolling it out to give you a better picture, but I wanted to give you a few hints of it because of the questions that you're asking, which are very good.
Well, very much like our signs, all of a sudden, we've reported all the signs that are needing repair, the original Goodyear signs?
Yes.
We had no money set aside for that. We didn't prepare at all. And Joe, you were very adamant about this fleet assessment, about having enough money come in. I think all the departments are starting to look now, that, hey, we just, we do something, but we don't have the backup to maintain it. And I think our old computer system, telephone system, is an absolutely star example of that, and that it did not get the help when it needed, and it kept getting glued and gummed up, and whatever you, and so where'd we end up? So I can see the planning. I think where the difficulty comes in is when the public looks at them, and looks at that number, and they say, well, we don't need to do that. If we need it, we'll do it the next year, or, you know, I don't want you to spend the money away. So that, I think that's where all the concern comes in here, but in order to sustain a city hall, and the staff, and everything you need, you've got to be realistic. It isn't, it isn't public-friendly, but it's something that has to be done, so. Joe?
No, just to piggyback what you're saying, and that's why the reserve's so important, because if you don't plan for this, what's going to happen is, at some point, when it really has to be done, then you're going to hit ongoing operating, and then basic services are impacted. So this is just good planning and smart thinking, looking forward and setting these monies aside. So I think if you explain it to the public that way, and you show a schedule, and where we're having money set aside, that's not fighting with, you know, making sure public safety's taken care of, or some of the other ongoing stuff that we have, the issue's resolved by planning, and that's what the key is, and that's why I appreciate what you're doing, because I think once you pull it all together, you'll be able to see the picture, and how much money has to be set aside. Right now, it's hard getting your hands around it, because you don't know what that number is. But once you get that number, you'll know. And the fact that you're doing it, to me, I appreciate that, because I know the importance of having those reserves, I think everybody else does, is if you don't have them, and you've got to pull them from your operating to build the things, then you have problems, because if you have a downturn, now your infrastructure starts suffering, so.
Molly?
Mr. City Manager, don't, isn't any expenditure $500,000 has to come to us?
Counsel member, or Campbell, even if it's budgeted, and has been approved by council in the budget process, anything over $500,000, even if it's within the budget, does require council approval.
Okay, and then when fleet management gives us their update, they'll advise us if something is falling apart or needs to be replaced, and gives us that thought, and then if they actually buy a new fire truck, that has to come before us.
Again, and as we go through the fleet replacement schedule, do you want to go ahead and address that, as far as fleet replacement schedule, and how that fits into the budget, and when council gets approval?
The fleet, we would budget for the fleet that needed to be expended, that needed to be replaced in a particular year, out of this reserve fund that we're creating. So there will be, for example, a year in the plan right now, where it's showing we need to replace three fire apparatus. So my understanding is that those three fire apparatus together would be more than a $500,000 expenditure, so that they would come for you, come before the council to have an action to award the contract to replace those pieces of equipment.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And didn't we ask that we wanted the transfers to be designated anyway, and when they passed it out? I think we had that discussion this year, that, you know, instead of a number and transfer, we asked it more, being more specific about what the transfer, what it is. So I think we solved that earlier this year. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. The next slide, I'll walk through the resource, the one-time resources that we're currently forecasting for FY '16. The first resource was a $6.9 million increase in the beginning balance, and that was primarily from increased revenues of about 2 million in last, over last year, and a decrease of about 2.4 million in expenditures last year, plus last year, the beginning balance was higher. And so those items combined left us $6.9 million extra at the end of last year, which added to our beginning balance this year. And we treat those carryover funds from one year to the next as one-time. The next source is, there's 1 million, in our most, in our current revenue estimates for the current, for FY '15, we're estimating that general fund revenues will come in $1 million above the budgeted level, and we'll be revising these estimates the next time we come to talk to you about revenues. We're also currently just doing a rough estimate that expenditures will be 1.9 million below the budgeted level, so that leaves one-time resources for next year. In addition, the 2.5% portion of the construction sales tax is treated as a one-point, as a one-time resource, so that's being allocated here. When we showed you the forecast last month, we actually had the full amount of the construction sales tax in there, so this is a slight change from what you saw the last time we came with the forecast. Then we take the $2.7 million that we are allocating in ongoing resources to prepare for the PIC set-aside. We take those resources, and we treat them as one-time in nature, and we use them to pay for one-time things in the current year. And again, that's so that we're building the capacity on the ongoing side of the budget structure, but we're then spending those as one-time, so we're not going to be using them on an ongoing basis. And then the last thing I'm showing there is removing those one-time, kind of those uses that we just talked about, from these one-time resources, leaving another 3.4 million available for programming to other one-time needs.
I think Joe has another question.
Just the 2.7s, is that the ballpark? Okay.
So what I'd like to do now is kind of walk you through the budget process to date as, with regard to the one-time type things that would be competing for these resources. And first, I want to let you know that we did increase the, some of the technical reviews done for the CIP submissions that departments submit, as well as for the supplemental submissions. done for the CIP submissions that departments submit, as well as for the supplemental submissions that departments submit in the ongoing budget process, or the one-time. For the supplemental process, the budget department reviewed the requests to ensure that they were things that could not be absorbed within the department's existing base budget, and also carefully reviewed any cost estimates in meetings with those departments. On the side of the CIP, both the engineering department and the budget office reviewed each CIP project request submitted by departments. We looked for the completeness of the scope of the project, that the completeness of the costs, given that scope, questioned if there was pieces of the scope missing. We looked at the timing of the request, whether it made sense that you could both design and construct a facility in the same year, or if those should be spread out over different years, and just the general reasonableness of the requests that were being submitted. And so that was kind of an added, increased review as these items, before these items come forward to you for recommendation.
Bill?
I understand the multiple-year major project issue, and I realize it's a very delicate balance. If we've got a, let's say, a $10 million project that we think is going to take five years, we're going to set $2 million aside for each of the five years. If we don't have the $2 million, then a project that is three-quarters of the way done falls short. So how do we, how do we anticipate, how do we, how do we fix that?
The practice is that the phasing of a project across years, the goal would be to phase it based on unique pieces of the project. So the first phase may be designing the project, and that's what would be funded in, or budgeted in that year or proposed. The second phase may be buying land, and so we would budget the land in the year when we could do it.
So we've got to find benchmarks.
Right, and so in terms of the construction, so say it is something like a five-year construction project, we won't award a construction contract until all the resources are available in the budget to do that. So I think perhaps in the past, you've seen projects where there may be indeed $2 million, $2 million, $2 million, and what has been done is each year, that $2 million gets carried over to the next year, so it becomes four, and then that four gets carried over to the next year, and it becomes six, and then maybe gets carried over to the fourth year, becomes eight, and that's the year you can actually award the construction contract. So it's been kind of a process of setting aside the resources and gathering them up until you can actually have enough resources to award the contract.
Thank you.
Joe?
I was going through the CIP. The one question I have is on the city property that we're working on right now. I see something in there for the multi-gen center, but what I was looking, have we looked at actually this coming up with a master plan for that area for our park? Because we'd always talked about a central park in that area, and we've even talked about on this council, but have we looked at master planning that area now that we have a few other pieces going in there to see where that park would be, how it would fit in there, where it fits into this CIP, probably more for the manager than it is for you?
Yes, Vice Mayor, the, we do have general, I'll say, general concept plans as far as a park, the 48th Park, specific to the 100 acres. That was in the back, but there's never been a point where we've actually put in the detail for that. So it's been more by, I'll call it just segments of the acreage, but there has not been an actual site plan of the parks or the recreation center at this point. That is later, as you alluded to, that is later in our, still a few years out yet before we get to that. But no, as of today, it has not been determined exactly where that location is.
I guess my only question is, is before we get too far down the road of putting buildings or something on that, on our land, would be nice to at least set aside that, you know, for the park and the other pieces, to make sure that whatever our vision is for that park and that area, whether it's going to go linear, whether it's square, whether it's rectangular, that we at least have that reserve, so we don't end up losing, I guess, that vision of a park in that area. Does that make?
Well, I think we've estimated, you know, we've talked about this. What is changing from what the original city center plan was, is that we didn't, we don't have that opportunity now to build it like we saw, but every time someone comes in and talks to us, we've talked the park, right, and planned acreage for this.
Right.
If in fact that, if in fact that happened.
Yes, there, one, let me back up a little bit, so the 100 acres is where we're looking at the park. The recreation center, and the earlier plans was actually on our 40 acres on the city center, with the, what was back then considered the performing arts center, the city hall, the library. Now, as we've gone forward to the university campus concept, we've looked, we've had the acreage set aside for the park in the background. Now, we would be looking at, would the rec center belong over there, or still stay on the 40-acre city center part? But the other is, this is a bit fluid, as we're looking at what universities would be coming into that property, how it's laid out, how we can integrate with them, where can we cost share, those types of things. So it's kept fluid at this point, just for that reason. We're not sure exactly what that'll ultimately look like as we get higher education into that campus.
No, I understand, I just don't want us to lose the vision of
Right.
that central park in there, because it gets eaten up by other things coming in, and drawing demand for that area, so to speak.
Right, and the acreage is still slotted for that.
Okay.
We're right at about 40 acres.
Okay.
Bill?
I'm going to follow up on this particular subject, but I've got other questions regarding the CIP. Do you want to wait until you get done through all of your slides, and, or pepper them throughout?
I'm good with whatever you're comfortable with.
I'll wait till you, I'll pepper them then. Okay, so on this particular, on this particular subject, we have money from the CIP that we approved for this fiscal year, beginning in FY15, that we're setting aside. This year is 1.021 million for the multi-gen. Next fiscal year, it's 1.361, and then monies as we go through. So it sounds like we're getting ready to hit these benchmarks that we talked about a few minutes ago regarding the multi-gen. However, the park for that particular area does not show up until the years 20 to 24, which puts a park a very long time away from being around the multi-gen. So I think it's incumbent upon us to maybe have a discussion of whether that makes sense or not.
We did, we did talk about it some time ago, about recreation, you know, we've gone back between multi-gen and recreation.
Yeah, whatever we want to call it.
It's going to be one or the other, and that having a park out the back of it, you know, that would actually be part of it. So I know that's part of the discussion. Oh, no, okay.
But while Larry's coming up, on that, on that subject, though, if we're going to start planning, we're going to build a, whatever, whatever we're going to call it, we're going to build this building, but we're not sure exactly where, and we don't know how it's going to fit in, seems as though we're putting the cart before the horse.
Okay, the only thing about this is, is it, and I'm going to use the fluid and flexible, if we knew, if we knew definitely this was going to come in, and that was going to come in, and each of the time we've talked to universities, they've talked to us about sharing a park, sharing fields, sharing a swimming pool, sharing, and now we even got the schools talking about that. So there could be, there could be a partnership with a high school, be a partnership with universities. So for us to go and carve it out and say, has to be that at this point, I don't know how we'd do that. And so it, you know, I just, I don't see that. And if I'm wrong, I want to be, you know, I want to be shown that. But if we go on and put some rules down now, now we've lost the flexibility when companies come in, or when the universities come in, because the conversation, if each of the universities has, has been different, each one of them. And so, but I agree with you that it should be always kept in mind that we're not going to give away so many acres away from our citizens, that, you know, a park is, then, now, we could sit a park in the middle of that and do what you all, since I see that you're going toward, and then a business comes in, or a university comes in, now it doesn't quite, doesn't quite fit. And so now we're doing transportation, and people flow, and everybody going back and forth, and making the street work, maybe have to have overhead and underhead, we don't know. So that's my only concern, and when we did the specific area plan, that was part of that, that in this plan, that we, even though it was specific, that we would have to be flexible about people flow, and depending what business came in. So that's my concern, Bill.
So are you saying, then, we're not going to build this multi-gen rec center until we know who's going to occupy the rest of the land?
No, probably not. They've got it on the board now.
No.
It's probably going to be built.
And that's what I'm saying, is at some point in a very near future, 18 months from now, somebody in this room is going to be sitting down.
Probably on the 40 acres, not on the 100 acres.
Well, that's, then that is, that's a really key point to know, as a council member, that we're not going to build it in that particular location.
I mean, that's an assumption, I don't know.
I'd like the finance director, and certainly understand the issues there, because you really need to know where you're putting it. We're starting to set aside money for it. I'd like our finance director really talk about it, because we don't have the money to do it next year, nor the following year. So this is starting to set aside money for when we are able to build it. And as you get closer to that, certainly we will know, we'll be a lot more site-specific, and we will look at the integration with the park itself. But Lori, if you could address some of the timeline that's set up for this?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this, me not getting too technical here, but as has been suggested, we've set aside money for each of the next few years to save money to do the multi-gen facility. And that, that location, I think the underlying assumption of that location is that would be on either the 40 acres that the mayor just referred to, or the 100 acres where the universities are, but on property that we own towards the city center area. That was the assumption in putting that in. Your question on the park that we don't have funded until basically 2024, the city does not have a community park in the central city area. Our development impact fee study funded to have one park built, but it takes 10 years to accumulate the resources. The assumption actually in the impact fee study is that that park itself would go someplace in the central city. It didn't specifically indicate that it would go on the property we already own. There were a couple other places that were looked at, and they were in the park master plan. So there's not necessarily a direct connection between the two locations in there. Now, as we get closer, and as the city manager just kind of referred to, that was the underlying thought as the CIP was put together a year ago. A lot's happened in the last year, but as we get closer to where the funding is, and where you really start planning it, which will be three to four years from now, before you really start doing your site plans, that's where the city council will weigh in very heavily on where will it be located, what will the footprint look like, and that type of thing. But at this point in time, it is a funding mechanism to get us to where we need to be.
Okay, which I understand, but I guess that drives to the other. There's $13.7 million programmed in this new CIP request from FY16 through FY19 for new trail space and park space, and we know for a fact that the central part of this city needs a park. So we found 13 and a half million to fund a park.
Okay, the chart that you are looking at is, and just for, I'm going to hold this up for the city council's benefit, and Lori is going to go through this in a couple minutes, but I will give you the sneak preview here. This top part is what's been adopted. That's what we have funding for. This bottom part is additional needs that have been identified. They are not necessarily funded. So we have not found additional resources to do any of this, but these are needs that include discussion that this council has had and so forth. It's not, they're not completely arbitrary, but these are future needs that need to be addressed. That's part of the discussion we're having tonight is one-time costs, which include capital improvement plan, future needs as identified here, as well as other one-time costs, which Lori is going to be talking about shortly, and what resources and so forth. Tonight is just to make you aware of all of those issues, but it is not to tell you that all of these are funded, and how they're being paid for. Did that help?
Yeah, I suppose. My concern is that however we do this, we always end up talking about it, and then we actually vote on this in June, and we all forget about this conversation, and these things, these projects that are listed in here miraculously show up in the CIP, and then a year or two years from now, we end up hearing, well, it's in the CIP, you guys voted on it. And that becomes very frustrating years down the road.
Actually, specifically on that point, the discussion tonight is more generic than you're used to for that very reason.
Okay.
We wanted your input today. We'll be coming back next month to show the proposed funding plan, which is separate from this discussion.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
And if I may, just add on to that, this is a time we'd be looking for additional projects, you know, Councilmember Lortano, you had talked about a signalization up in Estrella, but it is also, the project, the new CIP project request on that, it is trying to take what some of it, a lot of it direction from council, from master plans, things like that, and these are, as the finance director pointed out, most of them are funded. They're consistent with the plans and things that have been out there for us, and this is absolutely the time to start to get your input as far as kind of makes sense, what doesn't make sense, what are we missing? And again, we did go ahead and put dollars in there just to kind of show the magnitude of them, and that's what they're there for, to show, there are a lot of requests out there. Which ones are really the priorities of this council, and what other priorities would you like to include?
Well, is that maybe what they're saying, is they would like to see a line item that says parks? Central park? I don't know, I'm just asking that. Joe?
No, and again, I can appreciate the issues you raised, and the issues that council members stip raised. My only concern is we've been promising a central park for, since I've been on the council, and I suspect it was probably even before then.
We planned it when the city center was.
I know. So I just want to make sure, we try to get a park, central park, for those residents as soon as it's feasibly possible, and put it on there, only because it's something we've been promising for years, it just hasn't happened. You know, and I know we had the Great Recession, I realize funding has become an issue, but, you know, of all the things that, and we've done a lot over the last several years, is a park for our central residents, to me, is important. That's all I'm going to say. How we get there, I don't know, but it's important to me.
Gwen?
Well, I agree with you, it's very important, and I think that, if I'm understanding what Bill's concern is, and I can appreciate this, is that if we, we always need to recognize what we need to continue to add to the CIP, and the needs that are out there. I agree with that. But I guess the question is, when do you say, rather than starting to fund something new, we take that money and we say, you know what, let's push up a year or two on something that's already in the CIP, that shouldn't have to wait 10 years, and now it gets to be eight years, rather than, I mean, I think that's the question and concern, and it's back to prioritizing, what do we want to see done first? And I, and I understand the question of planning, of where some of these items may be. I don't feel it's this year. I think we've spent, we've planned to death everything, and then something changes within two years, and then we're, you know, putting money back into it again. So I feel right now that we don't need to plan this year. I think we're just saving for what's going to be coming, and we'll have this discussion maybe two years from now. But I really wholly agree with you, Bill, on the fact that can we really digest the things that are needed, and we want to see them in the, in the CIP, but we'd rather use that fund and bump up something earlier than, than going on, yes, they're in 10 years, let's bump it up, so it's, yes, it's only now in seven years. Yes, it's, I mean, that's, that's the question, I think, that we all need to talk about these projects.
Well, we sort of did it with the 911 building, and we did it with Public Works. Those have been on, the first year I was on the council, we were going to build those. We were going to build the police administration building, we were going, all that was going to be done. Well, look where we are. It's a long time, and they just got there. So, so I understand, I, maybe it's, I really, is it that, is it that it just doesn't show year to year a certain amount of money being put in a park?
Well, you have, well, Melinda?
I got, Sherry was first here.
I agree 100%, because I used to live in the central park, and I remember when the park was promised. And there's some smaller parks, but there isn't the big neighborhood park. But I do think, although we have some great plans out there, and obviously plans change and everything, we need to really look at if this is something we want to something we want to tie to the multi-gen, maybe there's a way on the CIP we could kind of track them together. That way, we're not having, oh, we're ready to build this one over here, but not that one. If we could kind of put them on the same track so that about the same time, you know, it's like chicken or the egg. I don't know which you have to build first, the building or the park. But if they could kind of track that they come into fruition about the same time, I think that would help out.
That was a discussion, because at one time, there was even a discussion about a pool and having, you know, an outdoor or indoor pool. And attached to that then would be some kind of recreational, I mean, you know, a park area behind that all tied in. So I'm, I don't know. I mean, I agree with you. These people have waited a long time, and we brought it up every year. It doesn't get done for definite recession reasons. But, you know, and, and you want Loma Linda to be, you want them both.
Well, I want them both. I want them both.
I know. So, you know, so we got that discussion, we got this discussion, and we had to use the funds for the nine-one-one or the other things, or we were going to lose the funds. Do we have anything connected with parks that's impact fees that we will lose if it doesn't get by a certain date? I don't know.
Ten years from now.
Not yet, ten years. Ways from now.
Ways from that one. Okay, all right. So that, that was the stimulus. Yes, I'm sorry.
Don't forget Wally.
Wally?
Well, I, I appreciate even the conversation of putting money aside for a multi-gen, whether we build it now or in fifteen years, because if someone comes and wants to have a conversation with us, and we haven't even planned, and they want us to partially, or work in partnership to fund it, and we have nothing to draw back on, I think we're, we're losing. And that's what I'm concerned with is when we're talking to the schools and to the higher education folks, they may want us to partner, and we've got to have some way to do that. Otherwise, they won't locate here. And I do know that you have promised a park, regardless of where the park's supposed to go, whether it's central, south, north, east, west in the city. I want it done right, and I don't want it done bottom of the line. And if it takes us fifteen years to do it and do it right and give them what we think they should have, I want to do it. I don't want to do it just because we promised to do it and throw it together because it's too important, since we've only got really one community park in our city on Litchfield Road. I know that took a long time to design, and it's a beautiful park, and we're, it's kind of our flagship, and we're very proud of it. So whenever we decide where it goes, and y'all keep saying in the central, I don't know really what is your central. My central is Human Cotton Lane, but your central might not be that far west. So that, I mean, I appreciate all talking about parks, but we just want to be cautious and do it right. And when the time comes, we'll have a conversation and decide where the park's going to go and what we're going to do with it.
Sherry?
Yeah, I, I know, and I would, I would love to see more money for parks overall for everything. I know that's one of the top things our city, I agree with, with Wally that, you know, I, I want it done right. I want it done nice. I want it beautiful. I want it done thought out. So if it goes with the multi-gen.
Whatever.
Whatever. We also do have the Loma Linda that I know the church has to, and don't forget about Estrella up there either. There is no playground equipment at all that is city up there at all. We have a, we have some soccer fields and a baseball, but the kids up there, if you're watching your younger brother's game, are playing in the dirt. So it's not redoing something up there. So the whole, we got to kind of keep in mind, there's lots of needs, and I wish we had more money to make it go around and could make it go faster. So that's kind of, I, I agree. I would like it done right and nice.
Any more discussion? Go ahead. Joe? Sorry.
I don't think anybody wants it done sloppy. I mean, I mean, I mean, well, we want it done right. But I, I just think at some point, when it comes to the parks, it's something we promise, and if there's money available, you know, I mean, you don't go in the debt for it. We set money aside. That's something we should deliver. That's all.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
All right. Just to real quick, tell you about the CIP process as well. This year, last year, a lot of time and effort went into developing a ten-year CIP for the first time, as well as a new infrastructure financing plan. So this year's approach to preparing the CIP was kind of a, more of an update approach. We asked departments to fine-tune their request for FY16 and to tell us if there was anything critical that needed to be, that they were requesting as new for FY16. We had to add the new tenth year, so there's a number of projects being requested for the new tenth year of the plan, FY25. And then we asked them to let us know or to request any things that were highly critical in the middle years that may be consistent with plans or other, other items that had already been approved by council in terms of, of a plan, not funding. So I'm just going to quickly walk you through, again, as, as Larry kind of walked you through earlier, we've given you a document that basically summarizes on the top the CIP projects that are included in the CIP that you adopted last year. Again, those can change. They aren't the budget. They're, they're as a plan. The middle section that's, and we also listed the one general obligation bond-funded project that's currently in the, in the plan, because that's essentially another resource for general fund-type operations, capital needs. Then the section kind of in the middle that's called new CIP project requests, that's what came up through that process that I just described. And so again, these aren't funded. These are things that would be competing for the one-time resources that might be available. And at the very bottom are some resource, some potential new resources. One of the things that we did learn through the asset management process with Streets was that perhaps three million a year is an, an appropriate funding level. And so there's a couple of years where between the ongoing budget of the 1.2 million that Larry mentioned earlier and what was in the CIP, it would exceed three million. So we've identified that those resources may be available for other needs in a, in a few scattered years. And then we've identified that 2.7 million dollars in new one-time resources would be available in FY25, which is that new tenth year. And that's essentially the, a portion of the construction sales tax that is forecasted for that year. And so the new requests in the, in sixteen include bringing the pavement management program to the three million annually. It includes a couple of, beginning of some multiple-year projects to deal with Loma Linda Park renovations. It's presented here in two projects. One, some kind of phase one, basic improvements. And then the second phase that's on the list is some improvements to the pool and to the community center there. In addition, there's a request to add one warranted signal to the CIP each year, so it would be identified once a warrant, a warranted location was identified. There's a request to fund some right-of-way improvements at Litchfield, on Litchfield at Yuma and Western. There's a request to fund an engineering plan for the Bullard Wash, and then eventually you'll see in the next group, a request to, multi-year request to excavate and then also add trails to the Bullard Wash. And then there's also a signal that requires general funds that is mostly funded by a developer deposit that we already have.
Wait, can you go back? Oh, go ahead and finish your list.
Joe?
Okay.
Finish the list, and then we'll go back.
In the middle years are the Bullard Wash and the trails that I mentioned. It's on some ongoing median and right-of-way landscaping improvements. That's the things like gravel and trees, or shrubs in, in medians that are already there. And then some intersection improvements at Van Buren and Bullard, and I believe that was a project that was removed from the CIP in order to fund the work being done to Goodyear Boulevard.
Joe?
Okay, yeah, before we get too many slides, let's go back to the first one. Now, what Larry just said a few minutes ago is these are things that are being requested. But what I heard you say is these are things that are being added.
No, these are things that are being, these are project requests that would use general fund, one-time general funds.
Okay.
They're not additions.
So now, as a matter of procedure, when are we going to talk about whether these stay or not?
We're asking for your feedback. We'll go a couple of slides. We're going to say, do you guys have any feedback? Are we missing anything? Is there something you want to see done? You don't want to see done? So we'll be getting, that's, the intent of this is to get feedback. And then we'll come back in April with a recommendation based on what we hear here.
Do you want to wait for the last slide, or you want to go now?
If, we just have one more slide before. If we can go one more slide, then we can just go to the discussion. And then these are the projects that are requested in the last, the new tenth year of the program. Basically, ongoing pavement management, the public art program, ongoing funding, the warranted signals, ongoing funding, police headquarters facility. And then there's a few projects that would probably end up in a new impact fee plan, and that would be a community pool, a community park, and a neighborhood fire station. Oops. I do have, I have, I have one more slide. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
The other thing I wanted to just bring you up to speed on was, we're in the process right now of reviewing the supplemental requests and the one-time things that are included in those. So this pie chart basically shows you that we have about 7.8 million dollars in requests for one-time resources that we're looking at right now. They, so this slide includes the 3.6 million dollars in the CIP projects we just reviewed that are being requested. In addition, we've identified that there might be about a million dollars in items in the one-time supplemental requests that would kind of fall within that asset management funding. So they may be funded by that, say, the five million or the two million. There's another two million in requests that are related to other equipment repairs or replacement, also kind of base budget items like utility costs going up, contracts going up, those types of things. There's another, just over half a million requests for one-time, or one-time costs for overtime and those types of things to, or temporary assistance to deal with potential increase in development activity. And then there are some just new initiative-type requests in that mix of, of items as well. And again, we're still going through that process, so we haven't flushed those out as thoroughly. And so this is where we're looking for your feedback, suggestions. Are we addressing the right things? Is there something missing?
No.
Yeah, okay, now go back.
Okay, to...
Start at the, start at the top.
This one?
Yep. Okay. The Loma Linda Park renovation started out last year as 250,000 for this fiscal year and 250 for FY16. In the suggested document that you guys sent to us, we added 650 for next year, 590, 270, and 590, taking that project to 2.1 million dollars. I know, and I was probably the biggest advocate of that two years ago, talking about the Loma Linda Park renovation. Now that we've heard very clearly from the community about the need for the central park, I'm wondering if, A, that still makes sense, and B, if we've got another initiative that will be briefed on later this week and in the upcoming months, that perhaps that money may be better spent in another larger park that serves a greater portion of the community rather than the smaller historic neighborhood.
One more thing on that, that we, there was supposed to be agreement between the church, and the agreement hasn't come forth over money.
Correct.
So I just want to add that on to that.
Yeah, that, that's the other, that's the other side of this. So me personally, sticking with Councilmember Campbell's kind of, maybe we should wait to see what we've got. I'm more inclined to wait and see what we got on the Loma Linda Park before we invest 2.1 million dollars in a very small neighborhood park as opposed to doing something for a larger subset of the, of the entire city.
Well, we brought this up. Can we have that discussion take place, the questions from all of you? So Joanne, I think you have your hand up.
Well, back on to that, then you have the Loma Linda Pool and Community Center renovation out in your fiscal year 20. If the central park does not include a pool, which I don't know that it does, this is our only pool, and that pool is in dire need and that community center, I mean, my goodness, look at the, the capacity that we fill with our swimmers every single summer. That needs to be, that's why, well, but if the pool's not going to be part of that park, then we need to address this pool now rather than later. And I would rather, and I mean, we've got, yes, Loma Linda equals 2 million dollars. It is still, it's central east of Goodyear, but it is still central. However, when we go further down to the Bullard Wash excavation, which is 2.1 million dollars, I don't, my first feeling would be push that out one year.
Well, that's next on my list.
Well, exactly. And so I guess, you know, if you, if anything, if you can't finish, if you can't finish the grounds of the park, move the pool up and get the pool completed. And everybody's back here, you know, talking. But that's, that's my feeling. And then especially, you're starting, which an awesome thing would be of Bullard, you know, park to be done. And, and I think that would be a highlight for our city to have. But, you know, I don't mind waiting a year to finish some of these things with these parks that we've been talking about for too many years. I mean, you know, I know Loma Linda, you guys don't, I'm always beating it up, but it's a what, a 50-year-old park. I mean, it's got to have some attention done. And regardless of whether the, you know, it's great that we may have a partnership with the church, but it is our park. It's not the church's park. They just are one of the biggest users probably. But that pool, I will, I have to say, if the pool's not going to be in the central park, fix that, fix that pool.
Sherry? Sherry?
I firsthand, we use the pool a lot this summer because my daughter took the diving, and a lot of the stuff was over the Y, which we also pay a lot of money for the Y, too. I mean, so we kind of should probably look at, at that as a separate issue with regard to our availability for that for some of our programs. But yeah, I, I would agree. First, we have to decide what our central, I guess we have to decide what is our central park going to have. That's the first question. If it has a pool, then yes, I say we put the money towards that with the multi-gen. But I think we have to make that decision first. If not, I would agree, it does need some renovations. But I don't know if the cost benefit to renovate that pool to the right standards, what that would be. The rest...
And the amount of people that can go there.
The standards. I, I don't know for swimming standards lanes. If you have to just totally gut it and build a whole new pool, is it worth it to do that to that pool, or is it better to build a new pool? I don't know what the standards are for diving and swimming and racing and that. So that's, I think, it's not just a plop-in pool. It's a, that type of pool. The community center, yes, it does need work. So if we took those two elements out, if they weren't going to be it, I don't have a problem with that. The rest of the park has all-new playground equipment. It has beautiful trees. You know, it may not have soccer fields, but it is a beautiful, it's an older park. But I thought it was gorgeous with those trees and the shade that we don't have in our newer parks. So there, there's a lot of pluses to that park that I, I think are really important. But I think we need to decide what we're going to do and the cost to make that pool to standard or whatever standard it is as opposed to what, like I said, if you have to gut the whole thing out and just rebuild and re-granite the whole, gunite it and just start from scratch, then maybe we are better just putting it in the park. So those are questions. But I don't have a problem maybe moving it all into one parks fund rather than saying, this is Loma Linda, this is central, and maybe putting it together.
Well, it doesn't meet its needs for the entire city.
Yeah.
It is not a pool that, it's a pool, a community pool essentially, although we're using it like it's a city pool for all the swimming lessons. But it doesn't fall within that category at all. And so to put all that into the neighborhood like that, is that equalizing our spending throughout the city? Joe?
Well, I would, I would think would be helpful probably from Nathan to get an overview of how much is the Y being used, because it's my understanding, we kick in money into the Y for, for our residents to use that facility. So I'm not sure how many, you know, residents are using the Y. Second thing is I'd like to, like to hear as far as the pool is concerned, because it's my understanding that pool gets used a lot. And if it gets used a lot and it needs to be renovated, you don't want to get to the point where it's in such disrepair that you end up having to trash the whole thing and start from scratch again. But I don't know the mechanics of it. That's kind of something that we'd have to hear from Nathan. But I know that's used a lot. But some of the dollars, you probably can shift to other places. But the pool, to me, if it's in, you know, real disrepair, is something you may want to take a look at and bring it up to speed, because I know it gets used a lot.
Brian?
Yes, and I would like to ask Nathan to come up here, but I do want to tee this up a little bit. The thought on Loma Linda improvements are, it was a court and lighting, and that was kind of the phase one. The second one was to start to work on the, the grass area, the basins, convert that over to sprinklerized instead of irrigation. So flood irrigation. So those were the things we were looking at doing. So it'd be upgrading the court lights, and then we'd be also doing adjustment to the, the grass areas, leveling that out, and then, then putting sprinkler irrigation in there. So that was a thought behind that to renovate that. And then the pool being a separate, separate discussion. And then if I may, just a little bit further too, I don't want to muddy this too much, but while we have Nathan up here, if he can talk about the central park as it relates to the Parks Trails Master Plan, just as a reminder.
Can I just interject here? We have a public meeting at the next one, so we have to start six, six-ten at the latest, something so, okay? Go ahead. Nathan? You're off.
Is this on now?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things I'd like to address. First is Loma Linda Park. And a couple of things come into play here. Yes, there was significant of community involvement that went into the development of the master plan several years ago, going back to 2010. of the master plan several years ago, going back to 2010. However, there were no commitments made in terms of a funding timeline. There were several needs that the community brought forth, such as enhancing the pool area, enhancing the play space area, the sports courts, as well as the playground. As you're aware, last year, we did go in and improve the playground. And right now, the park is not, you know, in terms of the amenities offering, it is slim. But it will require, whether this moves, the improvements move forward with the new amenities, within the next couple of years, it will require some improvement back into the infrastructure. The electrical system is pretty depleted and old at this point, the lighting is poor in the park. So from an infrastructure standpoint, it will require some investment. So regardless if we move forward with some of the new amenities that are planned for the park, some of the existing amenities will need to be upgraded. What we submitted this year was for a Phase 1 approach that would take a look at enhancing the electrical infrastructure, as well as the sports courts that are there. We felt that that would give a large community impact. The tennis courts there are depleted, and they're tired, and the concrete isn't the ideal playing surface, it's just unfinished concrete. So the request would ask for that we improve the electrical infrastructure that is going to have to be redone regardless in the next few years, new lighting on the sport court area, as well as enhancing the tennis court, as well as a basketball court in that area. In terms of the pool area, 25,000 pool visits last year alone, over 5,000 swim lessons. But if I can get Almo plugged up, I want to show you that the pool is not falling apart by any means.
Nathan, you have to turn the head down.
Other down.
Somebody want to help him with that?
There you go. I'll move the light out of the way.
Here we go.
That's that. Old school. Fantastic.
Put an acetate up there.
So you can see, we actually, council provided us with some funds this year to do some pool improvements. And one of them, a significant improvement on the left, was our pool plastering. And this is actually stealing my thunder from our budget talks that are going to take place next month, but you can see the after, we've been able to go in and make a really nice improvement with new plaster to the pool. So in terms of the pool itself, it will continue to function in a very good capacity for the next several years. There are some things with the bath houses that will need to be improved over time, but right now, the pool will function and will function very, very well for us.
So on that, I'm sorry, Nathan, so the pool is good. I'm thinking really around the surrounding area for all those people that come to those meets, that sit around trying to find room, and that, is that part of the enhancement you were talking about around the pool renovation?
The pool renovation itself would improve the bath houses later on in future phases, parking enhancement, which does cause part of the congestion for the neighbors.
Yeah, Nathan, while you're, when you guys internally have had discussions about a community rec center, MultiGen, whatever it is we're calling it, was there, did anybody ever envision that that would include a pool?
The, actually, the need was recognized for an additional community pool in our master plan that was just completed, and you will see that we have submitted a request for a community-wide pool that would be 10 years out in the plan for consideration if funds should be available. But yeah, absolutely, the, you know, the concept would be, how do we gain synergy with a community recreation center, a community park, and potentially a community pool?
Every community I've ever been in that had a community center, that's where the community pool is at. So I just, you know, when we look at the price tag of that community rec center at almost $10 million, I would have kind of expected that part of that would have included a pool.
That did not. That price tag will basically afford us 32,000 square foot of multi-use space and rooms.
Okay.
Well, Councilman Stipp, I believe a community pool, if we were lucky, and we were very lucky, it would cost us at the beginning $6 million and go up. It's extremely, extremely expensive to put the infrastructure in and to have what we need to have. So by working with what we have with Loma Linda, at least we can keep the swim teams intact and we can keep those programs going. And I hope that we will have a conversation about having a community pool, because if I understand correctly, a long time ago, before I was on council, the original thought was there would be a community pool up in Estrella, next door to the Estrella Foothills High School. And then when we were unable to use the impact fees, that went off the drawing board. But that eventual, I mean, that was what I thought we were planning years ago, like 10, 15 years ago, we were talking about it, so, but I agree with you, we need to talk about where we can put a community pool, and that should be on our radar, that eventually we want to have one. Joe?
I know we're running out of time because you've got to get that other thing started, so just quickly, maybe it'll need a yellow paper. Can you go into, if you don't have enough time right now, for the YMCA? What is the relationship with us? How many of our citizens go through there as a result of our relationship with the YMCA and our agreement with the YMCA? I mean, is it used very sparingly? Is it used a lot in addition to the Loma Linda Pool? It would be nice to get an update on that asset within our community and how it's being used by our residents.
Okay, absolutely. We'd be happy to get back with you via yellow paper regarding the relationship with the YMCA. I can tell you that we have worked hard over the past year to reestablish that relationship and increase utilization. As you're aware, we provide about a $200,000 per year subsidy
Right.
towards maintenance and operations. So we want to make sure that our residents are getting the discounts that were in the original arrangement, and they are. But in terms of actual usage, I don't have that with me tonight, but we're happy to provide that update for you.
That's fine.
Okay, I have a question I want to present here, is that there were a lot of questions, and so I am not sure, after this meeting, we have given a lot of direction to staff.
I still have a lot more questions.
And there's a lot more questions, so what do you suggest, City Manager, to continue this tonight after the special meeting? Is that what we're going to do?
Yes, we'd have two options. One, I mean, a special session, can you do that after the work session?
Yeah, I'd probably recess this meeting, have your regular meeting, then come back to the work session, then do the special meeting afterwards.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Is that agreement with everybody? Because I just don't think you've really been able to
Yes.
really talk about it, so. All right, so I'm going to recess this meeting with knowing that we'll be coming back and having the work session, okay, after the regular meeting? All right, meeting adjourned.
Correct. That's very frustrating.
I'm going to reopen the work session, and so we can just start where we were and continue. Yeah, but hopefully it won't be too long. Hopefully she's almost done. Oh, no, I have ads. All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We were in the point where you were discussing your feedback on CIP projects.
That's true, okay. I made the statement that I didn't think that we have given enough direction to staff, so this is your moment to do that. So who wants to start?
Do you want me to just keep going?
Sure.
Just jump in?
Councilman Stipp.
All right. So I think we discussed the park situation, got really good feedback on that, hopefully staff did. Is there any question, think on that? Probably not. Okay. The right-of-way median at Litchfield and Yuma, there are no right-of-way medians there, so I'm struggling with expenditure and why we're contemplating doing something there. There's nothing in that intersection. Are we talking about adding it?
I believe this is the median that's south of Yuma slash Western on Litchfield Road that would be adjacent to the old former Lockheed facility. So we're looking at upgrading that median landscaping.
Fire station? No, no.
Okay, yes, the one in front of Lockheed?
The one in front of Lockheed that continues down in front of Cookson Door.
Yeah, is that, well, it answers what part of the median. I just personally question, of all the medians that we have that are unimproved, how did we select that one over all of the rest of them that we still have?
Is this tied to economic development?
I'll let Nathan address that, but go ahead, Nathan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Great question. This was brought forward because of it being tied to economic development and the hopes of redressing up that area to make it look nicer for new businesses.
New businesses in the county island right across the street, is that what I'm hearing?
The area in general, including the Lockheed area.
Yeah.
As well as the entrance into the airport.
Right.
Which is on city, within our city limits. So both, yes.
So we're having activity on that. Councilman Holman?
Just my comment is, I know it is a county island, but I still think that that island is in, that median is in Goodyear, and that is an image. And if, for us to, we want to continue to build that image and make that area ever more attractive to fill in that area in the back, and I think it makes sense.
Any other questions on that? Okay, what's next? Any other discussion on what things were brought up? Yes, Councilman Osborne?
Well, if we're continuing down the list, the entire Bullard Wash system, as much as I would love to have everything, I'm sorry, to me, we need to finish the things that we've been talking about for the last 10 years, and that is completing this, you know, the issues with the parks again. And, I mean, this entire system for Bullard is, what, close to $7 million or more?
13.5.
It's what?
13.5.
13.5? Now, this is back to my original statement earlier this evening of saying, let's finish what we have in our CIP and then bring something new on. And even though I'd love to see this, it's back to the previous conversations that we had. So when it comes to the whole Bullard Wash stuff, if I have to prioritize, that one goes on the back burner for me to complete some of the other things that we've already been discussing.
Do you have anybody that can address what's happening with the Bullard Wash engineering plan, just to kind of give us a?
They wanted $200,000 for the plan, and then 13 million.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keith Brown, Assistant City Engineer. The Bullard Wash project, as you may or may not know, has been a prior project that we had a partnership with the County Flood Control to partner 50% of the cost with them to improve the Bullard Wash for drainage purposes and a linear park with trails and some recreation activities along it. It would be similar to what's north of McDowell. That portion of the Bullard Wash would be continued all the way south, down to where the existing improvements are at the, near the ballpark. The improvements from the ballpark south to the river are more of a structural improvements, and there would be some efforts to do trails and such along those to the, ultimately to the river.
Well, so, so the work you've done up to now on the Bullard Wash, this agreement with flood control, is that within a timeframe, or is that, is there something connected with that, with a continuation?
It was a, it was a prior agreement that is, and I don't know exactly the status of it, I guess my understanding is it may not be still current, because the city, we did not have the funds at the time to participate in the agreement. I would have to look into, to see what the status of that is.
So it's still an active agreement? I guess that's what I'm, is there still, I mean, that's the. I have a question.
I apologize, I would have to look into that and get back to you.
All right, Wally, go ahead.
My concern with doing trails and things in the Bullard Wash, I want to see trails, I want us to be pedestrian-friendly, but I want more effort done in obtaining grants to do that work, whether it's a match or what. But I want to, I'm not convinced that we have exhausted all areas of grants or asking AmericanTrails.org, RailsToTrails.org, there's a million of them, and I can't help but believe that we would not be eligible to do that. And I would rather use grant money to do that than money out of our general fund. And that money could go to other projects that have a higher priority. And I think if by using grant funds, even though you said we didn't participate at that time, because we didn't have the money, using grant funds when we get it and do it piecemeal would be just fine.
Any other comments? Councilman Lortano?
Well, this isn't on Bullard.
Okay, were we all done with Bullard?
I'm done with Bullard.
Okay, go ahead.
This is the light or the change in the crosswalk that we've talked about with some of the development up in Estrella, going through the Star Point and San Gabriel. Several people, after we had our Taco Bell meeting, I talked to, I guess, the Representative Kichel, and they have put speed bumps in by the daycare center.
Go ahead.
So there's two new speed bumps there, or speed humps, I guess it's not bumps, they're humps.
Bumps, huh?
Whatever.
Humps, bumps, I think.
But there are some there by the daycare center where the drop-off. My other concern has been with increased traffic up there since we last did it, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic going back and forth, either some sort of lighted crosswalk or some sort of light in that area, because what's going to happen is when that Taco Bell comes, it's a right-only, so anyone who lives at the whole part of Estrella back by West Star is either going to make a U.E. at the San Gabriel.
I have the same concern.
Or they're going to come out through the daycare and make a left there, so there's going to be a lot more traffic, so, because that is a left-only, and then you can't go the other way, so it's going to push that all to go around. And I know we're going to build more stuff, so I would like to see some sort of, and I don't know what the answer is now, but in the summertime, when you get more kids and people crossing on bikes and, you know, you're just going to have more traffic, pedestrian and mixed traffic up there, so.
Yeah, I have the same concern. I've been told the lights are quite close together, but I still have a concern.
But there's also a light coming out of, at the Walgreens, and they're timed, so if nobody wants to come out of the Walgreens, then it just stays green, so it doesn't really affect the traffic.
I've acquired that same angst about it after being up there several times recently.
Is that something, and I don't know what that costs, you're talking about a park?
My preference, I think, would be a light, because it's going to be
Oh, a light.
car traffic is the first, because you're going to have people coming out of the shopping center who can only turn right, even if they want to go up past the high school if they live up that way. So they're all going to be hanging U.E.s to get back on to Estrella to go that way.
So we need to have somebody really look at, study it, or something of what's going on there?
Yes, great discussion. I would like to have Rebecca Zuck, our Engineering Director, address this, both on where we're at with the traffic warrant for that intersection, as well as what is being proposed, suggested to be in the budget.
Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor. In this upcoming budget FY '16, we have proposed a pedestrian crossing. We have done a warrant study for both pedestrians and traffic. It meets the warrants for pedestrian crossing at this time. We will continue to study this location. It currently does not meet warrants, and that's taking into account the Taco Bell traffic as well.
Would that be a lighted? Was that what we're talking about, one of the lighted crosswalks?
Flashing beacons, yes.
Vice Mayor?
Well, that's what I want in clarification on. What is a crossing? I mean, will that address the issue that Councilmember Lortano is discussing?
Yes, the intent is to notify the drivers when pedestrians will be crossing the road with not only pavement markings, but as well as flashing beacons. with not only pavement markings, but as well as flashing beacons.
But they're still going to be doing U-turns, I assume, coming out?
That's my concern, is that once it's there, because it's a right-only out of that parking lot, and there is no way to turn left, they're all going to go to that same place and just hang a U-E. That's what I would do.
And thank you. I do understand that we will continue to study it, but we did just do a warrant study as a result of conversations that were in regards to this location. And so, at this time, it is not warranted based on the traffic.
Okay, so, right now, we're looking to get the crossing, that's going to be in the budget?
That is correct.
Okay, and then we'll keep an eye on it, and if the traffic's bad, we can let you know and do another study?
Well, and we do have an ongoing list of 10 to 12 intersections within the city that we're constantly monitoring, and when you see the warranted traffic signals on this list, that's what it's in reference to, is that we're constantly monitoring, and we are proposing one signal per year with an identified list of what we're looking at.
Vice Mayor?
Just a follow-up. Is that something that we would partner with Newlin or with Kitchell to help defray some of that cost if down the road there is a light or something that needs to go there?
And Kitchell has actually participated in two other signals in that location. I don't believe that they are party to this particular signal, but we will absolutely look into that. And we do often partner with developments in the vicinity of any of these intersections, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Campbell?
Rebecca, did you consider, or did anyone consider having the same type of lighting on the ground like you do in front of the Circle K across from the old police station? That they push a button, and when they go to walk, it's blinking all the way across rather than a light?
I'll let...
That old, old stuff.
I'll let our traffic engineer respond to that, please.
Mayor, members of the council, the in-pavement flashing crosswalks, more of an older application, and the rapid flash beacon that Rebecca referred to is what the FHSA is currently recommending. It would have, you'd have on the, on the right side as the motorists approach, they would see a, it's like a strobe flash beacon, and also one in the median in both directions. So, when a car comes up, they're going to have that flashing beacon with that unique strobe flash on both sides of them after the pedestrian pushes the button. FHSA recommends, as I mentioned, and it's very clear to the motorists that there's something to be aware of as they approach it.
Where's an intersection that has that, that I can go look at? I've never seen a strobe at a people walking across.
I know they've installed some in Scottsdale, for sure. I've talked to the traffic engineer in Scottsdale. They've installed a few locations very successfully. I'd be happy to provide a list of some other locations in the valley.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if, that the drivers, you say they'll notice it, but that's an awfully large span for people to cross if I'm thinking of the right place. You have a medium in the center, and they're crossing. I just want to be sure that drivers are aware that there is, because we're not going to have red lights flashing that will stop them. You know, you're not talking about having lights above where people will look. So, I'm just concerned that, you know, it may be what they're recommending, but that may not be the best for safety reasons of folks crossing that street.
Yeah, Mayor Lortano, Councilman Campbell will provide that list very soon.
Any other discussion here? I just want to clarify the one on Bullard Wash. We had one council person say that they did not want that continued, not willing to put funds into that. How does the rest of you feel? I'm just trying to give direction for staff, okay? So...
I think there's value in if we find out if it's in a contract that we actually are obligated to.
Right.
Where he said he was going to follow up on, is that something that we're obligated to, or is it something that we actually have some latitude to reallocate those funds? Because I can see Councilmember Osborne's point as far as if we've got other priorities, that's a nice chunk of money that's moving out there that we can move on some of the other issues we might want, so. But if we're obligated with some type of contract out there with a county or whatever, that's another issue.
I don't know. So, Councilman Lortano?
I would like to have us have the flexibility that maybe we could push some of that to get some of the parks that we just talked about earlier, because they are both type of park projects, so I don't think we're like robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're both park-like projects, so maybe just move one and finish one well.
But let's try to get grants.
Yes.
Grants are big. We may not be eligible for some of it, but surely there is some somewhere. Councilman Stiff?
Yeah, I would, I absolutely agree that we can better use this money elsewhere, and very honestly, if this was something that we were required, it would not have just populated into this year's CIP.
Any other comment? Okay, is there anything else you want on this list here?
Yes, next...
Councilman Stiff?
Next slide.
Excuse me. Mayor, Councilmember Stiff, sorry for the interruption. Just want to confirm on Loma Linda. So, direction there is everything is a yes except Bullard Wash engineering plan. And Loma Linda, as we understand the discussion from council, it was to look at doing some of the needed renovations, like sports courts, lighting, but nothing else as it relates to new construction. I just wanted to confirm that.
That's my feeling. I don't know about anybody else, but that's my feeling.
My, Mayor?
Councilman Osborne?
Well, back, but you're not including the pool.
No, the pool's been done.
Correct. It would, the pool's been refinished, but there was, we did not, I did not hear the direction as far as doing anything with the pool at this point.
Okay, I thought I, I thought I read that there was, oh, maybe I misread. I thought I saw 300,000.
Didn't we just hear that they have, they did repair some things in the pool?
No, but within the CIP, I'll come back to them, because, oh, right here, Loma Linda Pool and Community Center renovations.
Do you think the three?
And that's back in '20 and '21, so is that not necessary then? Is that what, Nathan, to move up?
We were asking for that in '20, '21. I think we can take some time to evaluate that over the next several years and see what condition we're in at that point. We have made some improvements. We did some cool decking repair within the past couple of years. We just came in and redid plastering. We redid our sound system. So, you know, we'll continue to evaluate that going forward. That request for the pool wasn't until five to six years from now.
And the parking, what did you state about the parking for the pool itself?
It's always going to be a problem.
I know, but I thought you...
The parking is also in the later years of a phase of the plan. If you were to move forward, it would be, I believe, in year four of the plan when the parking would be done. And again, if those changes or renovations aren't moving forward in a holistic approach, some of those repairs will be included in the asset replacement, because the parking lot does need some replacement at this time.
And that's the other thing about the pool. It doesn't have really a lot of parking, period. So, I mean, it's that type of pool that doesn't have land to have the parking. You park around on the street, so. Councilman Holman?
Oh, I just wanted to comment that really, that... That's the strangest parking lot I've seen. It is, even the striping is questionable. It is just goofy. I mean, the best way to pull in is over the curb.
It definitely shows its age and its, you know, its design, so.
Somebody got real creative back then, I guess.
Yeah, they did.
It is, it is one of our oldest parks, so.
Councilman Stiff?
Personally, I'm not, I'm not at this point in favor of moving anything forward on the renovation, other than what we've already have planned. We had budgeted for 2017, 250,000 specifically for Loma Linda improvements. We had in 2016, 250,000 set aside for park improvements, plus we already have money set aside for lighting improvements. So, those were some of the things that Nathan was talking about earlier with us needing to replace the lights, et cetera. Plus, we have the money that we're putting into the asset management. It seems like we're setting aside an awful lot of money that perhaps we're setting aside in other places already. So, personally, I'd like to see that, that whole thing be looked at and not be part of moving forward on Loma Linda Park.
I feel the same way. I want it, I want it to be usable.
Yeah.
I don't want to take that away, but at this time, I'm not, I feel the same way.
Well, Mayor, are you talking not to do the lighting? I'm worried about the lighting.
No, I'm suggesting the lighting. We've got the money already budgeted in a separate line for lighting.
We need to light it, we need to light those basketball courts so that they can play at night.
I think the best way to think of this is in terms of improving the existing amenities that are there.
Yes.
The infrastructure.
Okay.
Without going to additional amenities, without adding additional amenities, so...
Thank you for putting it so well.
We will, really two things here, and we'll look to address some of the areas within the asset replacement plan.
Okay, and then I had a question on another slide. Did that, I think I got to the manager's question. Can we go to the next slide?
Wait, wait, have you got, wait, I'm sorry, can we hold back? Yeah, Councilman Holman has a comment on that subject.
On Loma Linda?
On Loma Linda.
Yeah, I just, I just cannot see putting any more money into what we're calling that community building. As much as we've tried to make that a usable building, I think it is what it is, and I just wanted to make that comment. I just would not, it's just, I don't see it has a lot of potential.
For change.
Well, except to keep in good order and clean and painted and that, yes.
Yes, but, I mean, it just, it infers somewhere in here that there might be money to put into that community building and short of leveling it and starting all over again.
Councilmember Holman and Mayor, the improvements that were called out in the plan for the community center, we're now calling it a community room because it is just that, it's a community room. We're very small, $100,000 of improvements, cosmetic flooring, some of the walls, and maybe some roofing repairs, but nothing major type of renovation associated with that building because the thought is when the new community center comes online, a lot of those activities will transfer over to the new facility.
And we want it to look nice for the residents when they have the meeting in there.
Absolutely.
So, I don't want the residents to think that we're going to let it deteriorate.
So, it's more, again, it's not necessarily, it's just taking care of the amenity that's there now as opposed to improving with the new amenity.
Good. Was it Bill next? Bill?
Okay, Bullard and Van Buren intersection improvements, we took this out of the plan this year to pay for something specific, and now we're adding it back in. Personally, I have, I have concern about that, that we're adding it back in. We seem to be wanting to spend the money just because we have it, and I think there's things that we can, we can utilize that for, paying down debt, doing some other, some other items. We've got nothing, it becomes a placeholder essentially that we end up trading off or something later, and I don't, I don't know that Van Buren and Bullard is going to, going to need it.
I don't know that, because I'd like to hear from Economic Development before I weigh into that.
I'm just giving you my opinion, that's all.
But I, I know that's your opinion, but to hold that off opinion, I'd like to hear from Economic Development, because that is one of the areas we've concentrated on. And so, somebody want to address that?
Mayor, I am looking to staff for this. I think the best thing is to talk about what improvements are contemplated for that intersection, so are we prepared to talk about that?
Mayor and Council, the improvements contemplated at Bullard and Van Buren were to, along the south side of Van Buren, the section of Bullard that is south of Van Buren, to install a median and some landscaping and some, just to finish that street for a section south of Van Buren to make that intersection feel complete.
And that was a recommendation on, it was a focus that says, where was the recommendation on, that we had a group together that said that that was one of the parts of the city if we're trying to market it, that needed to look like we're interested in it, so.
Aren't we supposed to be straightening that road? Oh, Keith, aren't we supposed to be straightening Bullard? You know, where you go through Yuma and Bullard, and it swirls around, goes to the ballpark? Isn't that, aren't we supposed to be doing something down there?
This project is up at Van Buren. We don't have a project to do what you're referring to. The current alignment of Bullard Avenue is the ultimate alignment. Currently, we have the Bullard Avenue project that is improving the rest of Bullard Avenue South around the ballpark.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. So, is this intersection improvement?
Is this at the light on Bullard and Yuma where it crosses?
At Van Buren.
We need a light there.
This is, this is up at Bullard and Van Buren.
We need a permanent light.
Yeah, just down the street from us. Where there's that existing light, and all three of the other legs are improved. This would be improving the south leg of the intersection with, again, with the median and turn.
Sure. Right up where we're turning here to come to the Justice Center. Okay.
Let me just oversimplify this. Six months ago, we were okay with not doing this project. Now, we say we have to have $1 million back to do it.
Because we decided to take the money someplace else, as that discussion was.
I know.
So, now, obviously, whatever was going to, they have the history here to remind us, because we've forgotten why we delayed it. I didn't want to delay it. I've never wanted to delay it, so I've been constant on that one. Joe?
Here's kind of my, my issue with the improvements. It's my understanding, there's certain things you want as you go down Bullard. And I know several years ago, we had talked about an overlay district for that area to get developers onboard, so you don't end up with industrial down there, because my understanding it's zoned for it. So, we were going to get the developers to buy onboard. I don't see making any improvements until you got the developers onboard with some type of overlay, that they're in agreement to what you want that vision of that area to be. Because once you make the improvements, what's the incentive for them to come along and do what you want them to do? I think it's a mistake to put the cart before the horse. You got to get them onboard and then make the improvements. That's just my two cents worth.
Any other comments? Okay, I don't know what direction we gave you, but we want a nod of hit. Well, we can't vote, so.
I think the direction, the strong comments made are that this should not be included and have not, and I've not seen a nod in either way. So...
Are you just talking about Bullard and Van Buren?
Yeah, yes, this would be specific to Bullard and Van Buren intersection on the south side of Van Buren.
I'm sorry, I'm for it.
Well, you don't have to be sorry before, just sit there, you're either for it.
I'm for it.
Good, I mean, it's okay. Are we betwixt and between on this one?
I'm betwixt and between. I would like to have more conversation or hear more from the Economic Development Department to see exactly what their, their vision, or even just to get a better feel for why it came back in so fast. There is a reason. I don't think we've discussed it tonight.
Michelle?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Holman. Bullard corridor is absolutely a very important corridor to our future in Goodyear, and that is one area where we really want to see developed, and you're absolutely right on what it was said before. We want to make sure that that area is, I think Vice Mayor Pazillo said, that area is reserved for higher wage activity and some activity that we want to explore there, and it's important for the investment to be made. So, that's what I would say.
Thank you.
But the question is, what is it zoned for now? Isn't it industrial?
What the, Brian, why don't you address that?
I believe in, you know, Katie's not here, but I believe that the, I don't know if it's all zoned, but generally, it would be industrial and commercial is what the general plan would call for.
I thought it was all zoned. I thought it was all, my understanding was all zoned.
And I think it is industrial, but that, and especially with the foreign trade zone policy that you passed, would designate that for a higher wage activity and...
Yeah, my only concern is if the improvements are made, what is your leverage of getting what you want for that specific area? Because I know it was, refresh my memory if I'm incorrect, Brian. Several years ago, we had talked about a strategy of getting those developers up and down that area to buy off on an overlay of the type of businesses that we're looking to attract. Once we got that, then the city would go up and make the improvements, because there's no, once we make the improvements, there's no leverage. And it's my understanding, there's nothing from keeping them to put a big box, what's the term I'm thinking of, like in Tullison, one of those type of distributor along that area? Yeah, warehousing off of there if they wanted to, as far as zoning is concerned. Is that wrong?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, yes, it's an acceptable use to have distribution in that corridor.
They have both there.
Yes.
And that's, that's why I'm coming from, we should be working with them to get them to buy off on our vision and then make the improvements. And once you make the improvements, you have no leverage. They can do whatever they want. That's kind of where I'm coming from. It's not that the improvements are not needed, it's, you lose your leverage if you make the improvements before you get the developers onboard. That's where I'm coming from.
But if it's, if it's, if it's manufacturing, warehousing, how much vision, the way today's market is, how much vision can one accumulate with all the landowners which seem to vary frequently? And, and is it normally when a big user comes in that kind of starts to set the stage in this day and age?
Mayor Lord and council members, I would say that, you know, the, the city sets the stage for what they want in that corridor.
Which we've done already.
Yes, and I would say that it can be done with those landowners and get together with that. And I would say there's probably a, quite a difference between distribution and manufacturing depending on what the manufacturing is there in that area. I think that would be somewhat acceptable for that area, but I'd look to city management to.
It was my understanding at one point, we talked about the manufacturing, but we also talked about the realistic about warehousing, that we had to be realistic about it. And it seems to me that at one point, we talked about cutting a road in certain directions and putting the fulfillment or the warehousing in the back area and leaving the front. Is that, we, I remember that discussion, is that still on the, on the table?
Yes, Mayor, and then also back to a point Vice Mayor made, kind of dating myself a bit, I wanna say it was around 2006, 2007 when the then landowners of the Bullard Avenue corridor came together and created a vision. They actually got together, agreed on what, what their vision was. They, they had renderings of what that could look like, it was a lot of corporate office and it was, it was a higher skilled vision that they had for it. Most of those landowners are no longer landowners there. So, it, it has changed. Our goal is, is to really push back to the extent that we can, the distribution, and you will see that more, or excuse me, east of Bullard Avenue, so it is tucked back there, but not right on the front edge. That's, that's a vision that we continue to talk about, make that a higher, higher use right on the arterial itself.
But the vision, because I haven't, I think I still have a sketch of that vision at home. The vision was presented to us, would not have any feet at this time, I don't think. It was pretty elaborate, it was a mixed use, it was, it was really office buildings, it was, it was just a combination of everything going down to Bullard and, and you'd have to have a complete new study done on, on that at this time because it's just, I don't, it's changed so much around the city, so. But, you know, bottom line is the reports we've been getting, we need to start putting the city together and we need to make those entryways look inviting. And it's foreign trade, it's, it's, not all the cities have foreign trade and right now they're looking for foreign, I mean, that's where the business is, would you say that's kind of the big hotspot now for manufacturing and warehousing to go where foreign trade zones are?
I would say that that is certainly something that is a tool that we're able to use and that's able to help Goodyear to create those kind of employment opportunities, yes.
Sherry?
I, I notice also it's not till 2018 is when this is actually set, so I think this does give us a little bit of a window. And I wouldn't like to take this out of the toolbox for you to use to bring economic development here because that might be a tool that we need to, to talk about that we do have it in there and see it might be a selling point. So, I'm okay, it's not like we're going to spend the money tomorrow. I'd also like to see, because this is so closely aligned with the ballpark, the stadium property, that would give us some time to see what is on the forefront for that and that might help us develop our vision for Bullard. So I'm okay leaving it in for now and then if obviously something changes, we can relook at this one next year and, and say, hey, this isn't what we need or I need this tool for economic development instead with the stadium or something, but I say, don't take it out yet.
Well stated. Councilman Osborne?
That's pretty much what I was gonna, was gonna say. I recognize that it's a couple of years out and I think that that gives us plenty of time to, you know, bring people to the table, to help visualize what this is gonna be and I'd rather have it in there than not at this point, so.
Any other discussion on this one? So I guess you got the direction on that one, thank you very much. So does that do it?
Are we done?
Are we done?
Oh, no.
Whoa. Oh, Councilman?
Oh, no, we got a lot more presentation left.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. We're done on that section. Go ahead.
Tax policy?
We're ready to go.
Oh, my goodness, I've still gotta go.
Kidding.
I was ready to adjourn it, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Mayor and Council, this is, and, and once again, this is a great opportunity for any other projects that you'd like us to look at as we bring this back to you in April. We did get good direction, very much appreciate that tonight. Can you go one slide back?
Yes.
So, on this one, Bullard Wash excavation trails is a no. Median right away landscaping, I presume is yes. We didn't really talk about that one specifically on this slide.
We need to do that.
Yes.
It's really.
And then also Bullard and Van Buren, I think the consensus was to go ahead and keep it in there for 2018. And then the question is, anything that we're missing that you'd like for us to include before we shift gears and go into tax policy?
It's, it's not a miss, but the, the discussion is probably appropriate. I don't remember whether it was McDowell or Indian School, but a short drive between Pebble Creek Parkway and Litchfield, on either one of those roads, there are at least a half a dozen two feet or higher weeds growing up out of the street by our medians that I just passed over the weekend, that we have got to, we talk about economic development, nothing says we don't care like two foot high weeds growing out of the street.
Bill, I totally agree with you and I've been coming to the city manager about every Monday morning or with a list in some very nice developed areas that the, that they're not keeping up. And so, I, I totally agree with you and I've asked if our code compliance, if we don't have enough help there, but as you drive around the city, I finally, we're gonna get something done with the McDonald's where the drive-in is, the, the broken curbs and the weeds and, so I agree with you that where is the pressure put on the ownership of those lands, the banks and, 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 and why we aren't keeping up with it? But, if it's a, if it's a, if it, they don't have enough help, we don't have enough, we haven't built that division up, I don't know.
Mayor, I'm not even, we can't hold businesses accountable if we're not holding ourselves accountable.
No, yes, we can.
I'm talking about city property.
Yeah, I agree with you, city property, but yes, we can hold them accountable. They're got viable businesses, people are coming in and out, they're doing businesses and it's business, they can clear their weeds out and keep it up.
I agree.
But it's up to us to monitor it. If we're not monitoring it, then people are gonna get away with it. So, I agree with both of you, both sides, Bill, but no, I'm, I'm not taking the, the business owners off the list.
Oh, no, I'm not taking them off the hook either, but I don't wanna be the pot calling the kettle black.
So I would just suggest that when any one of us see a weed, we call the Goodyear number that's on my phone and report it and they'll take care of it and don't, you know, we're talking about it Monday night at a council meeting. Well, you know, it is what it is, but we've gotta do a better job, but depending on.
You can't pencil in your car and write it down.
Yeah, just, just, no, all you do is just push the button and take a picture and you just send it off. And it, and they, they respond immediately to you. But, it is a weed problem. I've got a terrible weed problem in my yard and I've had pre-emergent sprayed twice and I've still got weeds coming up. So I don't know why, but they're there and, you know.
Some of these areas are, have been there for a while.
They have been, yeah. Yeah, especially in the medians.
Joe?
Just a thought, we talked about some of our one-time money that we're pushing to probably some other priorities, if need be, maybe contract with a company that deals with that, catches up on all this. Might be a cheap way to do it as opposed to bringing out more staff if for some reason they can't catch up on it, whose job is to take care of the city property, the weeds, et cetera. So, it's one-time money, just something to think about.
Contract code compliance.
Okay, is all the discussion, are we, are we done?
Yeah, I hope.
No, we're not.
Want to cover tax policy tonight?
Yeah, you better go.
Okay.
Because this council's getting anxious.
All righty. We do have. I will, I will kind of speed it up here a little bit for you. We do have one question before we get to tax policy. On the schedule that you gave us for, holy smokes, capital improvement plan carryover, some of these projects are done and there's a lot of money sitting in, in this. What's happening with that money?
I don't know.
There's $25 million of carried over money, but, and I know some of these projects are complete.
Right, those, that's actually from the adopted budget. It was to give you a sense of what was in the current budget as you sat and talked about potential new capital projects. So I am not prepared to give you an update on the status of every one of those, but essentially they were projects that were either already under contract and may have been multi-year projects where not all the money had actually been paid out yet.
So this was carried over into this fiscal year?
It was carried over from last year into this fiscal year. So there are projects that were budgeted in a prior year that were not complete for either because they were multi-year, contract wasn't quite awarded, those types of things.
So will we get an update of what the status is by the end of this budget cycle on this? If I use this spreadsheet, will we get an updated version of it?
We can certainly do that.
Thank you. All right, I'm done now.
Okay, go ahead.
With that. Okay, so we'll, so essentially at your retreat and, and in some other settings, we've heard that there's a desire to have a discussion on some tax policy items. Just by way of an introduction, the Arizona ranks about 38th in tax burden per capita and if you look at some of the data, there was an ATRA, Arizona Tax Research Association report in the materials you received, you'll notice that Arizona is heavily reliant on sales taxes and not as reliant on income and property taxes. So I kind of walked through this presentation. As we came to you with the forecast last month, there were some questions about some of the assumptions that were made with regard to tax policy. And so I just wanted to quickly go over again what was assumed in the forecast we presented so far. We did assume maximizing the primary property tax rate. We assumed maintaining the existing sales tax structure and rates. We assumed that construction sales taxes would continue to be one-time in nature. We assumed there would be no legislative changes to local taxation and we also assumed there'd be no material changes to state shared sales taxes. So to quickly go through the areas that apply to the city in terms of areas of taxation, of course, we don't have local income taxes here. We have a property tax rate. This provides some information to compare us to other cities in the area. In terms of the property tax, the primary property tax is used to pay for ongoing operations and the secondary, which is pink in, in these slides, is used to pay for voter-approved debt service on bonded projects. And so they, to, just to share with you, next year, we're assuming about $7.8 million will come in from primary property taxes and the primary rate will be going to 1.1637. Sales tax is the other major area where there's some potential tax policy items. As a reminder, about 50% of our ongoing general fund revenue comes from the local sales tax and another about 8% comes from the state shared sales taxes we receive. We'll talk quite a bit about retail, that's the area where we have some questions. Just wanted to remind everybody that the use tax is there to essentially replace activity that, it's to collect the tax on activity that may have happened outside of a taxing, taxing area to kind of hold a fair playing ground for our local businesses so people can't benefit from purchasing out of town. They would still have to pay the, the equivalent of the sales tax. So some of the issues we were asked to bring forward or that have been raised in the past are the food for home consumption and what we'll have, we have some information on last year's actuals. Last year, food tax brought in approximately $2 million into our revenue stream. We are now back to the pre-recession rate of 2% on food for home consumption, the rest of retail is at 2.5. The value of a quarter of percent change in the food tax rate would be about a $250,000 impact to the revenue stream that we're projecting. And just by way of information to give you a sense of, of the food tax and how it comes into play, we, the groceries, kind of an average grocery store bill split is about 50, 46% would be food type items and about 54% would be retail type items. So that 54% is taxed at the 2.5 and the 46 at the 2, at the 2.0. Another area of tax policy is the large, single item retail rate. Again, this is the area where we have a 1.2% tax rate on a single item of 5,000 and greater, differing from the 2.5% on most retail transactions. That particular area brought in about $1.1 million in tax last year. And in terms of being able to quantify the impact of making a change on this particular item is very difficult. There's been suggestions that you could eliminate the, the differential here and go ahead and tax at 2.5. That would probably bring in excess of $1 million a year. That's the easiest one or the closest one that we can quantify. There's been suggestions you could raise it to apply only at items 10,000 and above or as low as 2,000 and above. You know, all we can really say is that if you raised the level at which it would apply, we would have more revenue. If you lower the rate, the dollar amount at which it would apply, we would have a revenue decrease, but we can't really quantify. And then the last area that we were asked to highlight or brought forward based on feedback is restaurant and bars. We brought in $5.5 million in that category last year and that's at a 4% rate. And I have a correction to this slide, the value of the 2 point, of the 0.25 or quarter percent rate change here is actually $350,000, not the 250 that's shown. And that, I went through it very quickly, so there's other information I can provide, but this is your chance to, to discuss tax policy.
Thank you. Who would like to be start? Vice Mayor?
What is our general fund operating revenue currently?
Uh, no, 70 million, 60, 60, 70 million, I think it's 70 million is what we're forecasting for next year.
70 million. And roughly, right now, we have $8 million of our general fund money diverted for other things that, in my humble opinion, is not your atypical general fund services. And in 2019, it's gonna jump to maybe 13 million, somewhere in that vicinity, which even if our sales tax grows at 10% a year or whatever the case may be for operating, in my humble opinion, that is a significant portion of your general fund money. Prelude to that is simply, I don't think now's the time to lower. Now, I would go along lowering, but to me, the financial responsible way is if you're gonna cut something $500,000 or 250, you gotta have a direct service cut of 250 or 500,000. Because if you don't, as that revenue grows, you're just gonna dig yourself a deeper hole by not offsetting it with a cost. And that's just my personal thought on it. Now, the other piece I had was the 1.2. And the only reason why I asked is what the impact would be is if we lowered it to, what is it, 2,000, I think Buckeye's at 2,000 or somewhere around there, is I don't know what the impact would be to economic development as far as recruiting larger ticket retail items in the city. I don't know if it would have a positive effect for like, what do you call, maybe, was it furniture stores or jewelry stores? No, they're already covered by the 5,000. I mean, because we already have 5,000 in there, so you're not gonna buy a motorcycle or a car for under 5, usually, all right? But I mean, for like jewelry stores or say appliance stores or things like that where you have items at 2,000 or greater, you give your customers a little bit of a break on the higher sales tax. And second of it, would it recruit any? I don't know the answer to that. That's why I threw it in there to have a, you know, maybe a response from economic development to see if that would help recruit those type of retailers to our, to our valley because, again, if we can give them a break, like our cars, our cars didn't seem to take off like we maybe thought they would when we lowered it. But again, when you're paying $30,000 for a car, that, that at 1.3% is a significant amount of money. So, that's the only reason why I added that in there to see if there's any value in, in adding a broader retail mix. Because cars and automobiles and motorcycles and RVs and that, that's all gonna fall within the 5,000, but it's a little high for some of the within the 5,000, but it's a little high for some of the other large purchases like furniture and the other things, so. And that's kind of my two cents worth as far as the tax policy.
Councilmember Laura Tannen.
I am still honestly really concerned about the economy. Our housing still hasn't picked up to where we need it. So I'm very much kind of stay the course right now. I would like to see areas, I'd like to see maybe not this year, but I'd really like to see is obviously, I would like to see the food tax. I do agree with the vice mayor that we need to say, well, what are we going to cut if we if we do this? We have to have that in mind, where that money's coming from, because we've just spent the last three hours saying, we need more money for parks. We want these parks done. We want this library, you know, not library, we want we want this done. We have to sit there trying to find the money for the parks and the improvements. So I think we have to keep that in mind. That's going to delay something. So we have to keep, it's a give and take. I also think our restaurant tax is really high. And it's been high for years, and we've had this discussion. And now that we're bringing in more restaurants, to be so high doesn't seem productive. We should maybe broaden the base and bring more restaurants in and have a lower rate and then make that up on volume. Again, I don't know if this is the year yet to do this because we're still kind of just bumping along the bottom. The last one that I'm concerned about is I agree with the vice mayor when we're talking about the single item. Right now, that seems like a break on luxury items, not for the normal person. The food tax seems like for the normal person. The luxury, if I go to Osborne Jewelers and I'm buying a $2,000 watch, because it's for a single purpose, it's not for all my jewelry I buy, you know, I'm obviously in a better financial position. So to lower that, I think, is giving, I want to say, a break to the more affluent. I would be okay keeping it at the 5 or raising it because you're still covering those automobiles, you're still covering the motorcycles, you're still covering, because you can't get much of anything for 10,000. You can't get a motorcycle, a decent one, for, I guess, under 10,000, right? Okay.
Not a decent.
You're not getting a Mercedes or anything like that, or even, you know, a Chevrolet anymore. You're not getting a car for under $10,000. So I think that helps the majority of our citizens to keep it at 5. I wouldn't support lowering it because then I think we're saying, well, we're giving it the break to the people who can lay out $2,000 for one single purchase. Because when I was talking to the city manager, he was explaining to me, one of my questions was if I go buy a whole room, uh-uh, my couch has to be $2,000, and that's a pricey couch for most people. So with that one, I'm either stay the course on that one or raise it up to the 10,000, because the purpose of that, I believe, was for the car dealerships and for those type of dealerships. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm very much stay the course. I would like to lower in a couple areas. But I'm just kind of a little shaky on the economics right now, you know? I'd like to see us in a better, I'd like to see more housing, I'd like to see more building, and then come back and look at it. So that's where I am.
Next. Councilmember Osborne.
Well, I guess I'll start with the easy one. And I can tell you in almost 19 years that I've been in this city, the amounts for items purchased over $5,000, I've probably had less than five that knew it existed. I was the one that was selling it to them. And so I don't think many of our residents or even outside residents really know the benefit of that, quite frankly. And I agree, that is something that if you have 5,000 and more to plunk down on, you know, something like that. And and we're not talking about vehicles. Vehicles is a separate.
That's what I said.
That's right. And so, you know, it is something for a luxury purchase. So I agree with you on that. I don't have any heartburn over that one at all. I still, I will not ever stop my push for lowering the grocery food tax. And, you know, I agree, there are many things. There will always be something we're planning for, there will be always something that we're saving for, there will always be something in our economy that we're concerned about. That will never change. There's going to be something every single year. But it's to me, when we when we raised the sales tax during a time that we needed to bring in more revenue, in my mind, it was back to the point of, you know what? It can probably stay at 2 and 1/2, but let's fix some of the other wrongs. And to me, it was wrong that the restaurant taxes it as high as it is. To me, it was wrong that grocery food tax was as high as it is. And I don't care that it's been that way for over 25 years. It's just wasn't, it wasn't, you know, competitive to where we could be. So that's my opinion, whether it's, I will still believe that this is the year we can do it, because I still think that in the big picture of our entire city's finances, when we sit there and say, you have to find something to cut for 250,000, well, you know what? We're sitting here arguing about how much we can save for everything. We have extra money in a in a in a fund amount that is in the 67 thou, 67 million dollars, and we're talking about 250,000. I guarantee it's going to be found. And it's not going to be that dreadful that everybody is concerned about. If it happens this year, great. If not, you know, I understand how this council is, and we've done the right thing so far. But I will always push for that change because I just think that that's what should happen.
Next.
Well, I've never lived anywhere where I haven't paid a food tax, so I don't know it any better. And it doesn't bother me to pay it, but I hate to pay taxes, period. But you have to pay taxes. You've got to pay for whatever. And while I'd like to decrease it, I just don't see unless we can come up with another revenue stream that we can't do it. If we do have a little money ahead, that doesn't mean that we can quickly lower all the tax and then use up whatever money we had and then find out that we we didn't have enough to do what we needed to do to begin with. Everyone that lives in Goodyear knows that this council does not want to raise taxes. And everyone in Goodyear knows that we're doing the best we can do to manage their money and our money. And I just think, I go to, I guess it's Avondale 101 and McDowell, and sometimes I'm over at Sam's Club, and I'm at Costco, and I'm at Red Robin and all of those, and I'm paying their taxes and I don't blink an eye. So I want people to come to Goodyear and pay our taxes and not blink an eye either, but I just feel that for the restaurant tax, 10% is high, but if we have the money to go out and eat, we're going to pay the tax on it. We're hoping that the visitors that come to Goodyear will pay part of that for our taxation. It's just like when you rent a car, you pay a certain tax revenue and you're going to pay it to the Arizona Sports Authority. And if I want to rent a car, I don't dicker about the taxes because I want my car. And I'm hoping that people that come to spring training will use our restaurants and shop at our Walmart. Heaven's sakes, the Walmart was packed full of race people on Sunday morning before they went out to PIR filling their coolers, and I was thrilled to see them all there. So, I mean, I hate that we have to charge for a food tax, but until we come up with another revenue stream, we we have to, we exist and we provide the services we provide because we collect the taxes that we get. And I think our tax rate is very reasonable.
If I if I may interject, I think the city manager was disappointed in, one of the things I skipped over in my speed to get you to your discussion was that we did have a study done a while back ago by Retail Coach that suggested about 70% of our general sales taxes paid by people from outside the city. So I'm.
Yes, 70%. You're right. Bill, did you have something?
Yeah, you know.
Did you go say anything?
That's been the case for at least as long as I've lived in the city, that the majority of the people who pay our restaurant and some of our retail are from outside of the city. And quite frankly, for me, that's merely interesting. One of the things that was very loud and clear, at least that rang through for me in the last 12 weeks or so, has been the opinion of our taxes. And as it relates to the food for home consumption and the restaurant tax, our restaurant tax is the highest in the valley at 4%. Our home for our food tax is is right, right in the middle. There are a number of cities that are less than us, and there are a number number that are above. And I think I did the math, and I think we are actually right smack dab in the middle at 2%. And while I appreciate the idea that we've got, we've got some uncertainty in the economy, that uncertainty needs to transfer then to the expenditure side of this discussion. I don't know who said it, but we were, we've spent the last three hours talking about, how do we spend $25 million of one-time money? And we're we're arguing about how we're going to do that. And we can't come to agreement on how to how to save 250,000 per, you know, quarter percent on the food tax. That seems kind of ludicrous to me. And so if we're if we're going to hold off because of the economy on not changing a revenue source, then we better be holding off on increasing the size of this government at the same time. The inflation is hitting everybody, and you know what? We've got to do it. We've we've sat around and we we've told people about, we've got this great system about priority-based budgeting, and we have seen the number for the last couple of years of the Tier Four and the millions of dollars that sit in Tier Four, and we've done nothing with it. We've said, wow, look at that. We've got a whole bunch of projects that don't meet the criteria or that are so low on the priority list that maybe we haven't, maybe we don't need to continue them. And we we do that, that's us. And so for us to pretend that we don't have another revenue source, we do, it's internal. And and I'm not making any, I have no beef with the property tax rate. We've got a great plan that brings us back to the 160. I I think our restaurant tax is absurd at 4%, and I think we can do more for the food for home consumption. That affects the lowest common denominator in that in that the tax application. Everybody has to have food. Not everybody has to go out to eat. Not everybody gets to buy something greater than $5,000, but everybody has to eat. And every one of our residents pay that. And for the short money to reduce it by another half a percent for $500,000, given what we've got, not to mention the millions of dollars that we carry over in unused resources every single year, we're kidding ourselves. We've got the money to do it, and I think I think we owe it to our to our residents to take a hard look at this and and reduce at least the food for home consumption and then then let the chips fall on the rest of it.
Thank you. Councilman Holman.
Well, I could only hear about one sentence out of every four of what Bill said. So I'm not even, I'm not going to rebut it. I have, what I did hear, I didn't totally agree with. I do agree with Vice Mayor Pozillo. I think if we want to cut the tax, I think we have to cut the expense. I mean, I don't think we we can just, I agree with the food tax. I think we need that something we need to look at incrementally reducing. I have felt very much the same way as you have, Joanne. I just, I it's, and I think Bill said it's not a choice, whether we're going to eat or not. And I don't want to send all of our residents to another city because that food tax is lower there. That's not fair to our residents. That's not fair to the people who are selling food in our community. So anyway, I do feel strongly about that, but I feel just as strongly as Joe does, is that good business is not, you just cut it down without having another a plan to reduce the expense to keep that balance. I mean, a city is a business, not unlike any other business that operates in many ways. In many ways, it's very unique because they have other people telling you what you have to do, and that's a whole nother night's discussion. But I just think that we have to be very smart about the way they do that, and I think these discussions are healthy. We don't all have to agree, as long as we can talk about it and come up with a reasonable, good, solid business decision.
Sherry.
I have one question, and then I have a comment. How many households do we have in this city? Households, do we know?
25,000, is that houses?
Households?
Households, yes.
How many, 25,000?
I'm estimating about 25,000. Population's close to 75,000 and close to three per house.
Okay, so just my very rough math, if we say $250,000 divided by 25,000, we're saving each household $10. And I think we've been sitting here discussing not our one-time money, not on on these wants and these glamorous things, but kind of needs and not wants, like pavement management, that's really kind of not a sexy topic, but it needs to be done or it's going to get worse. So I like the idea of bringing down the food tax, but we also have to say, does my $10, your $10 a year, and your $10 a year, is that worth making that cut? Because I do agree with the vice mayor, we have to decide where that's going to be. And maybe we do find that in priority-based budgeting. Maybe that is something we can find, and if we do, I'm all for it. Then the other thing is maybe there is a way that if we look at this, I want to say almost a luxury exemption, if we look at raising the luxury exemption that would help most of our citizens, maybe that could be the balance to bringing down the food tax. You know, if we could look maybe at that, if you raise that up to 10,000, if that brings in enough to lower the food tax by a whatever percentage. I don't know the math on that, but that's just an idea I'm floating, because I think less of our citizens take advantage of that, more would take advantage of the food tax. So that's just my thoughts.
Vice Mayor.
Just a follow-up on that one for Councilmember Laura Tannen. I would think if you're going to get any bang for your buck, you've got to raise the 1.2%, 20% or 30% up to make up the money. I would think most of the things in this city, when you're looking at 5,000 versus 10,000, it's a car. So I'm not sure you're going to pick up any whole lot of new money, because now you're looking at cars that are selling for 10 as opposed to 5. I think raising that from 5 to 10, with the exception of maybe some items that Councilmember Osborne said she sold maybe five of them, you know, on the large ticket, 5,000.
Five people knew about it.
Knew about it, oh, okay.
I sold more than five.
Okay.
Let's hope I have.
Okay. Well, I mean, over 5,000, well, whatever. My my point is, is that to get any real money, you're looking at the 1.2% rate, I think, if that's what you're going to do, but not by raising from 5 to 10, or I don't think that's going to get you the money you need. I don't think so.
All right, well, I'm just going to extend the last to talk. It was interesting, Mayor Lane, it was in the paper of Scottsdale, their council, he and their council decided not to reduce the grocery tax due to the economy. And I think they're pretty much parallel. What is their income compared to ours, or an average income? Are we there about the same as they are?
At last census, we are slightly above Scottsdale's.
Slightly above Scottsdale's. So there's there's a city that has lots, and and they decided not to do it at this time. I'm not opposed to having, I've talked or thought about it at one time or another about taking that tax away. But again, I agree with you, if we're going to do that, then we need to, you know, we need to find out where the resource is going to be in. So I want everything else to stay status quo. So if, you know, if I had to negotiate on this council, it would be on the food tax. I would I would I would eliminate the food tax and not change anything else.
I'm sorry, not eliminate, I don't think you want to say eliminate correctly. You want to go mean bring down?
No, I just.
You mean eliminate the food tax?
You're talking about one, what are you checking out, one?
Oh, I was talking about incrementally as we came.
Half a cent, okay.
Bringing it down, another another quarter.
What is the 250?
250, right.
250 is a quarter.
That's a quarter percent, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm willing, I'm willing.
Right. And and I would like, I'm sorry, Mayor, one one thing about it is that at 250,000, and we have not seen as a council, back to Councilmember Stipp's comment of what are the Sector Four pieces, you know, what are the lower of the priority-based budgeting? We haven't been looking at those things. We I don't know what all the the Level Four items are to even say, you know what? There it is right there. I mean, we, when are we going to be seeing those as a council? When are we going to be looking at the priority-based budgeting?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, we're actually looking at March 30. It's not currently a scheduled work session date. We wanted to confirm the council had availability, because then when we go to, excuse me, April 6 and 7, that's when we get into the departmental presentations. And we will have snippets of the different quadrants in those presentations as part of those. But I think it's time to really talk about how all of this is tying together, everything from our strategic action plan, our priority-based budgeting, how that all fits together, how we use it as a budget tool. So talking to staff today, we thought that March 30 would be the time to do that. We don't have anything else scheduled, and it will give you time to really better bring you up to speed on where we're at with priority-based budgeting and other related activities.
So I don't want you to misunderstand me. I would rather stay status quo, stay, keep it just the way we have right now. But if it ever got to the point where this council is, gets to a point that I have to give on something, then that my vote would be I would negotiate on that one, but not on any other ones at this time.
Are we voting tonight?
No, no, no.
Are we just?
We're just, we're talking.
That's for your discussions.
Yes, Brian? Yes, Brian.
I'll take a leap, I think, on the single item. Heard a lot of discussion on that. I believe that, that's one we would keep at the 5,000. I know there are discussion to go down and/or up. And then the other one, I, there were discussion on restaurant bars, some, some concerns expressed where we're at right now. I, I did not get the direction, and please, this is a time to make sure that we do have the correct direction, did not get the direction that there would be any movement on that particular tax rate. And then it really came down to food for home consumption, and what I'm hearing is the potential of dropping a quarter of a percent. That's the amount I heard. I'm not sure where the consensus was on that.
Joe?
You know, my, my point was, if you can find me 250,000 of ongoing, then I would be for it. The problem is with the one-time, the one, the, the whole, the way the budget process works is the one-time money is used to fund replacement reserves and et cetera. It's built in, that's why we have those sizable amounts at the end, because without that budget approach, what happens is, is you're using ongoing to fight for your day-to-day, you know, one-time. I mean, if you think we've got too much one-time, then lower sales tax, because that's a one-time revenue source. But food is an ongoing revenue source. Now, if you want to cut it 250, if you want to cut it 500, you want to get rid of all of it. Just find me a operating revenue, or a service, or another fee to make up the difference, and I'm good to go. Otherwise, I can't support it.
Mayor, well,
Joanne.
And, and I appreciate that. And I think until we're given the opportunity to even say, what does that mean? I don't say, I don't know how we can really answer that this evening. It kind of brings me back to how many ever years ago, that we were sitting there having these, having to raise it that, you know, the half percent for sales tax, and it was looking at the city manager. Of course, those were big numbers compared to 250,000, but it was back to, you know, we don't dictate to you those line item things necessarily. So unless you want us to be truly looking at line items, and that we start with the Priority Four type of items, that's what we need to be able to say, because we can't say it up here tonight and tell you exactly where it should be done, because really, that's your job as our city manager, to say, you know what? This is what I can look for, this is what makes sense. Because we're not really supposed to be doing that. We're not supposed to be dictating to, to management of line item necessarily pieces, unless we're allowed to look at those Level Fours and say, you know what? Those are not necessary. That's where I said, I can't say that tonight, that this is the time.
Any other comments? So.
What, what we will do is, we will look at the quarter percent reduction, what impact that would have on this budget going forward, and, and advise council where we believe, where we would absorb that. So, direction that I'm hearing is that, bring that back, what impact does that have? I think there was, sounded like enough consensus to do a reduction to the food tax. I'm talking consensus, I see some heads yes and some no. So, really, really, not trying to put words in council's mouth at all, just, what we will do is, we'll go back and look at what impact that would have and where it would impact, so.
I think that would help.
That's what we'll do, as part of the budget process. We're not changing a rate tonight,
No.
But we will certainly bring back what impact that would have.
That would be very helpful. Everybody agree with coming back with that, with the revenue source?
If we can drop all of it, do it. Drop out the, you know, do away with all of it. Everybody's so concerned with
Eventually, maybe someday, someday, I wouldn't say now, but someday.
Yeah, we are, and I think there was a comment on where we're at, on the food tax rate. At 2%, we are the lowest, certainly in the Southwest Valley. The other cities have not done a differential rate with their food tax, so they're, they're at their general sales tax rate. So, council has dropped that over the last, well, dropped it two times by a quarter percent. So, just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, okay. With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to, going to go into the special meeting. We're going to have to take a break here a minute, okay? All right, all right, meeting adjourned, let me call this. I'm going to call the special meeting to order.